Good evening and welcome to our September City Council meeting. We have a busy evening tonight. We have some exciting things to work through and we were going to keep working hard to get through them all. And I thank all of you for attending at this point. So first we'll have roll call, please.
Councilmember Alafano?
Here.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fraser?
Here.
Councilmember Potchus?
Here.
And Mayor Muller?
Here. And we'll have a pledge of allegiance, please. The mayor doesn't get too many privileges, but I've taken one this evening, which is very exciting. I've talked to all of our pals in town. They said they'd support anything we do as long as Patriot gets a key to the city. I told them I'm not up for election for two years, but they said, "Don't worry, we'll still vote for you." But in all seriousness, Richard and Jackie have been great community supporters for all of us here on the coast side. Richard is one of the key figures that helped us many years ago. City Attorney Candati and I were working with Coastside County Water District and we were trying to build a pipeline for our El Granada neighbors. And a few of the individuals that are still kind of opposing us opposed us. And Richard had the wisdom, at that time he was a photographer, he could go out and he took pictures of this 55-year-old rusted steel pipeline. And our final hearing at the Coastal Commission, I believe, they said, "Oh my goodness, those pipes really need to be replaced." So that was one of the reasons El Granada has water today is because of the work everyone did to get that going. And so Richard has waited quite a few years to get Patriot, so it's very appropriate. And I just thought it would be great with the -- it turns out with the Dog Park, Marsha, on here tonight, too, it's very appropriate that one of the celebs gets honored. And so we made a key to the city and I got my buddy Silvio, who did a great job. And so at this time, we'll get Richard and Patriot to come forward to the podium and I'll bring them, present them a key to the city on behalf of all of us at the City Council, all of our friends on the coast side of Richard and Jackie's, and all of our pet lovers throughout the coast side. So this is a very special key. Not everyone's going to get one of these. A dog bone, right? And so my buddy Silvio, I make bells, did a great job making a key to the city for Patriot. So he will be hanging in honor of Patriot and all of our families on the coast side on Merrimahona Street. So Richard and Patriot, congratulations and God bless. So when you see those two going down Main Street, you know they're kind of in charge. So we always called Richard the mayor of Merrimahona anyway, but now Patriot's the real official key to the city of Merrimahona Street. So good job, you guys. We love you and we're happy you got Patriot. And Canine Companions in Santa Rosa were just amazing to work with these dogs and they are just absolutely God's gift. So now we got to get help. We got to go to Dog Park. How appropriate. So we will move on to our next item, Dog Park presentation.
Great. And thank you and congratulations, Richard. I couldn't have had a better segue into what I'm going to be talking about here. And I don't think that Patriot could be any better example of how near and dear dogs are to us today. So I want to give a little bit of a success story as well here and just go over the Half Moon Bay Dog Park fence project, which was just recently completed. As you all know, for the past four years, the patrons of the Half Moon Bay Dog Park has been working very, very aggressively to, one, go for expansion of the Dog Park, but two, what became a more urgent project was replacing our fence. It had been terribly dilapidated and we were really at risk of, well, it was unsafe and it was getting ready to fall down, which we'll go into. But we made a couple of presentations to the Park and Recreation Committee and then last February, we were able to meet in front of the council and present our cause. And thankfully, last spring, they were able to allocate $25,000 for us for a new fence and for park improvements. And I can't tell you how much it is appreciated and how well it's been spent and that's the purpose of my presentation today. Working with these funds and in conjunction with the city's Public Works Department, we recently made these park improvements. So as you can see up here on our before and after, this is standing on the west side of the park on the before picture, looking north. And that fence was literally about to fall down. It's very dilapidated, very rusty, and just very old. It was originally built from inside warehousing material, never meant to stand the elements of the coast side, but we were grateful to get it when we got it. So it worked for a long time for what it did. As you can see now, we've got a beautiful, sturdy, stable fence that's going to be working well for us. I will also let you know that on the left-hand side, that before fence, we lost more than one dog hopping over it because they could. So that didn't make for a good afternoon for anybody when that would happen, I promise you. Just to give you a little bit of an idea here, as well as how bad it had deteriorated, there's the before and the after. And one thing that I've noticed is I've stood at the park now with the new fence in there. It's not what you see, it's what you don't see. The other fence had been so dilapidated, so corroded, and it was such an eyesore. And now it's just a clean, beautiful, streamlined process. So we were loving that. I also wanted to point out some of the additional improvements that were made. And on this one, I really want to tip my hat to Larry Carnahan and Rob Eastman, who did the work. These guys had some very creative ideas and they were a delight to work with as well, but they made three major improvements for us. One is the actual entryway, which is the far end of that path. And what they did is they reconfigured it so that it's set more into the park, so that as a new dog is coming into the area, they don't get rushed and cornered and overwhelmed like they did with our old configuration. And it has just made a great difference. The second thing is the pathway that was put in and it provides a much more stable environment for our elderly park users as well as disabled individuals. They don't stumble as they used to on the wood chips. It's a much more stable, safe surface. And then also, they redid our deck for us, which provides over twice as much seating as we used to have, and it's awesome. So it's become a really great place for socializing and community building and just a great way for people of like-minded loves with their dogs to be able to sit there and have a great day. I'd also like to point out what some of the volunteers did there is while the park was out of commission, park users got together and sanded and stripped and basically refinished all the furniture. So we've got a brand-new park, is what it feels like, and it's just been fabulous. So thank you all for that. To celebrate, we had a great ribbon-cutting ceremony on the 23rd that kicked it off. And you can see my golden there and she had the honor of being the first pooch in the And she's been back quite a few times ever since. On the bottom side, you can again see the entryway and the improvements of it for where we are there.
Marsha, would you comment, please, on that bottom left? I believe we have a timeout area also, but Patriot wouldn't have to go in there.
No, Patriot would not have to go in there. I have a very funny feeling Patriot will never see the inside of that park, of that pen. That's right. There's a timeout pen, so when some dogs get a little over-rambunctious and they're just kind of feeling a little bit too much of themselves, we can safely put them in there for a breather, let them calm down, and then reintroduce them back into the park. And it's been a very good thing to have over the years.
I wondered if it'd be appropriate for city council chambers even, you know?
You know? I can help you with the design.
We could take it.
Yeah, no, it's been awesome. It's been -- and again, that whole park of the reconfiguration where the timeout pen is part of what gives the other dogs more room coming in and it's just not such an overwhelming procedure. So that has just worked great. So again, I wanted to thank Alex very much for his support with the permitting process and basically overall project management. Again, Larry and Rob for their hard work in just getting it done. They did a fabulous job. And council members, I want to thank you as well for the support that you showed for us by allocating these funds. I can, as you can see, what a difference it's made. And I would also really like to stay on your radar as you go through and plan your master expansion plan or master plan for Smithfield in general, please keep us in mind. We still really do want to expand and there is a need in the community for a separate small dog and large dog park area. So if we can stay on your radar for that, that'd be fabulous. So thank you very much.
Very good. So we appreciate that. Yes. And we will move on to our next item, Planning Update Presentation, please. While you're getting organized there, please, I neglected and Councilman Kowalczek reminded me, and I apologize, our new city manager, Magda, is first meeting. And you're such a true professional that I neglected. You're just like a familiar person there. So thank you and welcome. And council members, you're welcome to make a comment, too. I apologize for not recognizing you earlier, so I owe you one.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, we would like to talk very briefly about the accomplishments of the Planning Division as it relates to the Matrix Recommendations and some other things. In February of 2014, the city established the Community Development Department. And one of the goals in doing that is to bring all of the services that have to do with development under one roof and to look at development in a comprehensive way. So the Development Department is comprised of Planning, Building and Safety, Engineering and Code Enforcement. And we have four established goals that we're looking at. And Bruce Ambro and I are on the same page because this is essentially what he tries to infuse into any procedures and processes that we have. So our four goals really quickly is a well-defined general plan, an LCP, and we're going through that process right now. Specificity in plain English of our policies and procedures. We don't want people to come and try to have to wade through pages and pages of regulation. Let's make it easy for people and put things in plain English. We need to have inclusive and informed decision-making. When City Council or the Planning Commission needs to make a decision about development, we want to have information available so that you can make an informed decision. And lastly, predictability and consistency. And that's what we try to infuse into everything we do. Bruce Ambro and the M Group are in lead or in charge of our Planning Division, and so he will lead us through the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dante. Mayor, Council, we're happy to be here. And you may recall that in 2012, the council commissioned a report that included an assessment of the whole Planning Department and covered all areas of operation. And we refer to that as the Matrix Study Recommendations. It included 53 overall recommendations for all aspects of planning. And then, wrong way. So if we're looking at how these areas of improvement were identified, there are really five basic areas that included administrative policies, procedures, and projects, the planning tools, if you will. Technological improvements were identified. Support and efficiency and improved operations with the Planning Commission was also identified. And then the whole concept of these advanced planning priorities that Dante just referred to. But again, all of these recommendations were aimed at improving the efficiency, the effectiveness, predictability, and consistency with our planning process, and it covered all of these areas. So for examples, some of the administrative policies and procedures, what we've been able to do is develop kind of how-to, step-by-step procedures for the staff so that we have consistency and uniformity on all staff. And then we provided these staff report templates and procedures in a manual that's being circulated for review at the table now. But as you can see, it's a pretty lengthy compilation of procedures. Included standard conditions of approval. It also included procedures that weren't necessarily identified in the Matrix Study, but when once we got into this, we figured out that we needed to do other things that weren't necessarily identified in the Matrix Study. So those were in addition and above what was identified in those 53 recommendations, one of which is biological report requirements. A lot of, we do, as you know, we get a lot of biological reports. So it's helpful to give the applicant some idea of how that whole process works. So these how-to and help manuals are to give them a better idea of how things work and what to expect. And then, you know, you'll see there's a number of just step-by-step procedures. Examples of administrative projects that we've done include a lot of work that it took to, believe it or not, to reconcile the zoning ordinance and make sure that we've got the right version of the zoning ordinance on our website and at the counter and that staff is using. It took a tremendous amount of work. We've also are happy to report we've got, with this item that's on your agenda tonight, we're going to complete the backlog of local coastal plan amendments that have been in review at the Coastal Commission since 2010 and 11. We've completed that and then we've made some significant advancements. For example, you may recall, we went through a pretty extensive permitting process to do the routine maintenance of all our drainages. That was appealed, went through the Coastal Commission process and a pretty lengthy environmental review and comment process. Those are some of the examples of the administrative accomplishments. But in terms of the areas of, for example, in planning tools that we can do to help facilitate and make it easier for folks to understand what's required, we place a lot of emphasis on graphics, making, as Dante indicated, clear, simple language. Our drafting principles are it should be easy enough so that 10 people read it, 10 people can explain it the exact same way to 10 different people and everybody would have the same understanding of what's required. And we place a lot of emphasis on the handouts that we have, and those are examples with a lot of graphics and illustrative emphasis. The other thing that we, trying to get at this aspect of uncertainty, is providing predictability in the process and structuring planning cycle times. And that means for projects that are categorically approved are exempt, we can guarantee when they come in, once we know how their determination is going to be, when we can set them for a hearing. So that takes, that adds predictability and takes the uncertainty out of the process. A lot of this information is also attached to the PowerPoint and there's a report behind it that identifies these a little bit more detail, but I'll kind of go over quickly the remaining items. The other items that we did in terms of helping folks understand the requirements, the planning tools, if you will, we did a summary sheet. We got questions all the time about a plan unit development. So what we tried to do is take a kind of a complex idea and we tried to simplify that. And I think it is pretty simple, once you review this, of what's required with PUDs. And we've got, as you know, two-thirds of the city is designated plan unit development. So we've got all of these all over the place. And so it's a place where folks can look to find out the answers to their questions in one piece of paper. So it does include all the regulations, but it gives them a snapshot of what to expect. And then, for example, some of the other things are like tree removal handouts, again with more emphasis on graphics and illustration. Some of the technological improvements that we've instituted are, we're happy to report that we've just now started using a permit tracking system, which really moved us from the third world to the first world in terms of planning. This is, I can't tell you how much time this saves us, once we can track all of this information and keep it compiled in one set of data so we can look through the history without going through storage. So that's a work in progress, but right now, we're tracking everything through the permit tracking system. We just instituted this a couple of months ago, but already it's paying dividends in terms of efficiencies and improvements of the system. So one of the other items that we studied was the concept of GIS needs assessment. That's another thing that we're trying to integrate into the program is a good example of a technological improvement. But one of the, we've moved, you can see the older maps to the left and what we've got right now in the GIS format to the right of that. Those are available on the city website and we're handing those out. We're using those. Those maps are approved now, the zoning map is at least. And then, again, the GIS is part and parcel, the whole mapping efficiency and accuracy that we're working with. And folks can just read those a little bit better because they're in color. And the old maps that we had are kind of turn-of-the-century black and white and difficult to read. But another important area of coordination was improving our efficiency with the Planning Commission. So what we were aiming for was improving coordination in terms of expectations and smoothing our operations with the Planning Commission. We conducted numerous meetings, joint meetings that you folks have been involved with. And also, we had a facilitated meeting so that we could all identify ways to streamline our operations and improve coordination between staff and Planning Commission. There's also the whole area of general plan support. We've done support for the circulation element where the housing element was submitted to the Department of Housing, Community Development last week. We're expecting to get some positive movement in that direction. And then we're underway with design guidelines, overall residential design guidelines. We're also actively involved in, right now, supporting the whole general plan outreach process. You may recall that we've had several community meetings, visiting meetings, targeted outreach. These meetings included, last week, we met with residents from Village of the Coast Side. This weekend, we were at the farmer's market and at the kids' fair. And later on in the month, we're targeting a meeting with, that's to be facilitated in Spanish, with the Main Street project at 1101 Main Street. And we've got a facilitator for that that speaks Spanish. And we're looking forward to completing that and seeing, getting some more robust input and feedback on the process. But in summary, though, attached to your PowerPoint is a summary of all of, how we've implemented all of these recommendations. We're happy to report that all of these are currently, we've differentiated them into actually three different categories. We've got the five different categories that cover the general groupings of where they are in terms of planning tools, administrative policies and procedures, vans planning, and so forth. And then we've identified in your handout the items that are completed in green and things that are in progress in yellow, for example, like the permit tracking system, where we're fine-tuning this system on permit tracking and GIS. And then the big red one is things that we're still underway with, which is the general plan update, the local coastal program update, zoning ordinance, design guidelines, and some of the other things. So we're making progress on those, but it'll be a couple of years before we complete those. But we're happy to report that from a technical standpoint, all of these have been implemented, are being implemented, and are, we're underway in refining. And lastly, you know, this isn't going to be, we're never going to wind up to a complete stop. There's always room for improvement. Even when there, we can always simplify and improve the quality of these handouts. And so even once, you know, we come to a place where we've got all these things, there's still time to freshen them up, fine-tune them and improve them. And things change, too. Ordinance has changed and our general plan, our policies changed and so forth. So it's a work in progress, but we're a lot better off than we were a year and a half ago. And I'd like to introduce your planning staff for you. If you can, I've got Carol Hamilton, who is our senior planner, senior planner extraordinaire that has done some really good environmental work and wrote a very good and defensible environmental document. Next to, on the other side, we have Scott Phillips, our associate planner. He's our technical planner extraordinaire, who's working on permit tracking, GIS, and those kinds of things. And then Bridget Jett, who's been helping us mostly with these Matrix Recommendations, but also she's kind of the glue that holds the whole operation together for us. Anything we throw her away, she catches and scores a touchdown. So she's, you know, that's the team. They've been a big help and we've come a long way. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. And planning, as we all know, a number of individuals in this room are well aware of planning. It's a very tedious and complex situation, but I will tell you, the other day, we are fortunate to be in downtown, council members, and I ran into an individual coming out of City Hall and welcome and this and that. And she was an appraiser for Bank of America. And she does appraisals all over the Nine Bay Area counties. And she said, "You know, I was in there visiting with Scott Phillips and it was the greatest service I've ever gotten out of the city." So hopefully, thank you, Scott, for being recognized by that appraiser, whoever she was.
The new bar.
Yeah. And so that's nice to hear that. So, because I know it's tough planning, it's tough for all of you involved in planning. So we appreciate that very much. So thank you, staff. And any comments from council on this? Yes, Councilman Kowalczek?
A couple of quick, first of all, thank you for the hard work to the whole Planning Department. And Scott, that is now the new bar. It is now the basic expectation.
For appraiser.
But just a couple of comments. I think it's great work and there's just noteworthy improvement to the whole planning function, so that's great. And one anecdotal example, I bumped into somebody at an event on Saturday night who was opening a business on Main Street. And in my five years, I have not gotten for somebody to come up to me and stop me to tell me about their planning experience in a good way. And it was very flattering. Now, of course, there's always bumps. Planning, you know, we have rules to follow and it, but I think the anecdotal evidence is supportive of all the data you're sharing with us. And one little side story, we were also, we were at the farmer's market together and talking about the general plan with the community. People would pass by. And at 8:45 in the morning, a guy walks up, scratches his head, looks at a map of the city and goes, "Well, you probably can't answer a zoning question, council member." And Bruce goes, "I can." And bam. And it was like very specific and I think our outreach efforts and a lot learned from our library work is to be out with the community, get their input, and it's really been beneficial. So thanks, Bruce, and thank you for planning.
And thank you for your Saturdays and Sundays in front of New Leaf and farmer's markets and wherever else to engage the community, all of you. So thank you. I think that's very important and it shows that we are working hard at outreach in City Half Moon Bay. All right, that concludes that item. And next, we will have our presentation from a representative from the homeless outreach. Please step up. And welcome, state your name and look forward to your presentation. Get you to push the little green button.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Jerome Ombiata. I am the Outreach Case Manager for Envision Shelter Network. Before I get into the updates and the numbers of the actual outreach efforts, I just want to remind everybody about the Half Moon Bay HOT, what it stands for, Hot, sorry, Homeless Outreach Team, and what we do. So the HOT team was developed to contact some of the most public nuisance, most problem-creating homeless individuals, head be chronically homeless, people who lived in the streets. So it was our job to go out there and contact these individuals and try to get them help and assistance. There's been a consensus of about 120 individuals that have been counted in Half Moon Bay, we're including transients and as well as homeless individuals who actually camp and live in the Half Moon Bay. So far, in about nine and a half months that I've been doing this, I've contacted about 40 different individuals, been able to conduct assessments. Assessments are things as far as background, contacting family members, looking deep into their past to try to figure out what drives them to be homeless. Those individuals are then presented to a meeting to where they're then voted onto a list. That list consists of anywhere between 10 and 15 individuals. And those 10 and 15 individuals are then specifically case managed by myself and other And those 10 and 15 individuals are then specifically case managed by myself and other colleagues with Invision Shelter Network. So, the main goal in mind is to get these people to be self-sufficient on their own, get them off the streets, and get them into living into their own apartment or permanent subsidy housing. So, if we go into the numbers and the updates that we've had in about nine and a half months, I've been able to house... Well, Invision Shelter Network has been able to house 10 clients. And that is ranging from getting their own apartments to either moving back in with their families and/or being placed in various housing units like such as some of residential treatment programs and detox. Also, something else that has been created within the nine and a half months is being able to develop working relationships with the Coastside Clinic, Coastside Land Trust, BHRS, the Sheriff's Department, and the Senior Thrift Store. The Senior Thrift Store has been great. They've been able to donate clothing to most of our clients. And it's... I can't thank them enough for helping us out. I'm going to... Does anyone have a clicker? So, I have here... I want to share some success stories. I have one person in particular, not on this slideshow, but he's been a longtime homeless individual of Half Moon Bay. He was actually placed at our Common Grounds in Redwood City, which is a residential treatment program. And from there, he is actually was one of our most troubled clients. He was a chronic homeless person, habitual alcoholic. This guy was creating problems with the police and the community. We were able to finally get him off the streets, placed into a residential treatment program. He's been clean and sober for 120 days now, over 120 days, now looking for employment and looking for his own apartment. So, those are some of the things that we're proud of. We're proud of getting these guys off the streets and getting into their own place. The next success story that I want to talk about is this particular campsite here that we see on the slideshow. This person lived underneath Highway One, underneath the bridge on that walkway. I'm pretty sure most... Everybody has at some point walked through that walkway there. So, this was a picture I took when I first came on. And you can see the amount of garbage that this person has accumulated over the course of time. And most of that garbage there is all alcohol, like alcoholic beverages and cans. And... There you go. All right. And so, this is just another picture. This happens to be on a day that this individual has recycled all of her garbage for money. So, this is something that they would do, was they would consume all the alcohol, recycle those cans, and that's how they would collect extra money. So, this was on a day that this person actually got paid, so to speak. Same picture here, just a different angle. And you can see the... Some of the wetness down the hillside there. It's just... It's very inhabitable, very toxic, very dangerous. That's me snapping a photo of this person, tried to... Don't want to bother them. At that time, the person was sleeping. And this is what it looks like today. This individual has been placed at Coeur d'Alene. She has now been conserved. So, she is now getting the medication that she needs because she also had a severe mental issue. So, this is another success story. We got her off the streets. She no longer drinks beer. She no longer does drugs. She's now conserved and being cared after. So, those are just some of the success stories that I wanted to share with you guys along with the updates and the numbers of the housing. We still have a lot more work to do. Like I said, we've only been in this nine and a half months. My goal is to try to house everybody. And we're going to keep teaming up with people in Half Moon Bay and in the county. So, and I think if we keep going in that direction, everything will be good and smooth. Any questions, comments?
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the hard work. And I believe in Sunday's paper, there was a long article about homeless. And really, the healthcare issue is very important and it all in the city of San Francisco spending tens of millions of dollars and it's not working yet. So, thank you, guys. And I believe you have an associate with you here tonight. Would you like to introduce him?
Hi, yes.
Would you come to the mic, please?
My name is Bob Stebbins and I'm chairman of the outreach, homeless outreach oversight committee for the Coastside. We also have a team which Jerome is helping to manage in Pacifica. So, it is really the outreach case managers such as Jerome who keep the whole process going. And we meet once a month in each of the locations for a case management conference, sort of the sort that he spoke about, where there's an extensive presentation of the process of progress of everybody and decisions are made. We want to thank all of you and the community's support. And as Jerome says, we will keep working. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, our Coastside Connect transportation plan, please. Supervisor Horsley. And I thank all of you for your patience. We'll move through this as fast as possible, but you know what? This is an important evening for all of us.
Well, thank you, Mayor Mueller and council members, as well as city staff, and especially your city manager, Mark Gonzalez. And I've worked together for many years. I think you've made an excellent choice for a new city manager. Any case, the Coastside Connect is really, it's a project that came out of our LCP. We were required by the Coastal Commission to actually do a transportation, really a traffic management plan. I'm not going to say that we're going to be able to solve all the problems, but one of the things that it does do is that, you know, it gives us ideas about how we can better manage the transportation issues that we have out on Coastside. It's mostly focused, frankly, on the north part of the coast and Montero, Moss Beach, El Granada, Montero, I think I said Montero and Miramar. But at the same time, because of the fact that it's the, you know, we're really connected to Half Moon Bay, we have to also include the city of Half Moon Bay as part of our plan. So, what I wanted to do is introduce some of our... I think you know some of my staff. Nicholas Calderon is our senior legislative aide. He's working very hard on this project, as well as the Surfer Beach project that we're all working together collaboratively. But Kendall Flint and Bill Lundout are our consultants. And James Hinchcam is also with the county staff. So, you know, I'm going to have Kendall, who's going to... She's actually our consultant, and she's actually going to run through all the slides for us.
You'd be great.
I would be great with this.
Well done, well done. Thank you, thank you, Don.
Welcome.
Again, I'm Kendall Flint with Flint Strategies here in Half Moon Bay. And I'm the task manager for the public outreach program for Connect the Coastside, which again, as Don was saying, is basically the county's version of a comprehensive transportation management plan. Now, let's see. Am I on? Ah, was that you or me? Okay, well, I'll do this, all right. So, as he was saying, the planning area basically takes in all of Highway One from 280 to Highway One, and then Highway One going up to Devil's Slide and down all the way to the border to Half Moon Bay. And what it's really about is a balancing act, which is looking at both within the county and then looking at what the city of Half Moon Bay is going to do. How can we accommodate future residential or business development with our existing or future transportation plan and investments? So, the idea here is to take a look at all of the existing things that are happening on the Coastside right now, as well as the development potential looking down the road. And we're conducting a build-out analysis at this point to figure out where that balance is going to be. And one of the really great things about the coordination in this particular case is that Diet and Baccio, which is working with you on the general plan update, is also working with us on this plan as well as Plan Princeton. So, there's a lot of coordination and a lot of shared information between the agencies with regard to land use and what we could be looking at in the future. Now, the plan is going to be making recommendations for a process to manage growth. It's fundamentally a transportation planning document, but it does have to take a look at the existing and future potential for development to make sure that we're going to be able to accommodate that down the road. A lot of folks that we've been talking to have concerns about, you know, how much is too much? How wide can we get? How many roads can we have? And what we're hearing consistently is that people really want us to keep the rural character of this area, that we are not San Francisco. We've got a very unique and valuable asset here. And so, it's really that balancing act to make sure we can accommodate what we need going forward. The plan also has a financial element to it, which is looking at the potential impacts or the potential investments that would help us accommodate that growth and how we might be able to secure funding for those. As Don mentioned, this is a requirement of the California Coastal Commission, which is basically following the county's general plan update, taking a look at how we're going to accommodate not only our residents and our businesses, but potential for visitors that come to the area for things like Pumpkin Festival, Maverick Surf Festival, International Marathon, and places like that. So, the plan's going to identify measures or opportunities that we might have for investment to accommodate that growth and that infrastructure. Now, these measures could be any number of many things. Go to the next slide here. And these are just some examples that are potential. Nothing's on the table right now. These are just things that we're looking at. Roadway capacity improvements. Anybody who's come over 92 and gone through Lemos Farm on a Saturday knows how much fun that can be and daring if you have to turn the other direction. So, things like making auxiliary lanes in that area or potentially even climbing lanes coming on the westbound side of 92. Rounded bouts or other types of intersection control methods. These would predominantly be seen in the north end of the county, the north end of the midcoast area, in Moss Beach, in El Granada. And again, ideas of ways we can mitigate the length of time that people are waiting and make it safer. Increased transit service, and I have to give a plug out to some friends that I met last night down at Moon Ridge. A lot of people on the Coastside are already very concerned about lack of capacity when it comes to transit and moving students, children, high school students, and some of our other folks through SAM Trans. This study is going to look at opportunities, if they are needed, for increasing transit service and figure out ways that we might be able to accommodate that, either working with SAM Trans or working with the local school districts. Shuttle buses to Coastside beaches and parks, the potential for having them come over the hill and bring people to our community without taking them in cars. And of course, looking at multi-use paths and bike lanes, safe crossing for Highway One and 92. Again, this is something we're looking up and down the Coastside the whole way. Differences we want to make sure we're really clear about. This is not a general plan. This is not an overhaul of your circulation element, which ironically Bill just completed a few years ago. Your general plan is your own, the city's own land use planning document and is a separate thing entirely. What we're doing is taking a look at what the city is doing and then taking that information and incorporating it into the transportation management plan. So, as you choose to grow or not grow, or as you choose to invest in different types of land uses, that's going to influence what happens in this plan. So, it's designed to support growth that is required or requested by your community as well as the county. And it really is looking at directing a decision-making process as we move forward to grow along the entire Coastside. And again, that would be anything that relates to either businesses or residential development moving forward. Now, up here, we've got a neat little map. These are our project area divided into 11 areas. And where this is important is for the next slide I'll show you. We know that there's differences in each of the various areas along the midcoast. When we look up at people coming out of Devil's Slide, it's a much different concern coming down Highway One with regard to bicycle lanes and pedestrian access than it is, say, when you're in Princeton Harbor. So, each of these areas has been looked at as far as what are their real needs, what are their concerns? Next slide, please. It is coordinating all of the other efforts that we are... Have been looking at thus far, which is both the Highway One Safety and Mobility projects. Those were improvement studies that were done up and down the same length. The Highway One Congestion Management Project. As I mentioned, we're also taking into account your general plan update and the work we're doing in Plan Princeton right now, which would be also affecting this. We're also, of course, coordinating with the San Mateo County Congestion Management Plan and working with Recreation Parking Assessment. So, again, this is a collaborative parking... Or, sorry, collaborative planning effort that's looking at what everybody's doing to determine how we're going to be able to work together in the future to be successful. So, the technical evaluation is continuing now. We're looking again at multimodal needs. That means bike, PED, and transit. We're coordinating, of course, with all local agencies. That would include SAM Trans, our local school district. We're working with the Harbor Association, Midcoast Community Council, everyone that we possibly can, as well as working with them all on the development of a finance plan that would relate... Sorry, rely on both state, federal, and local funds that might come out of impact fees. So, again, as I mentioned, we'll be looking at recommendations for future transportation growth and recommendations for a consistent process to review these proposals. We anticipate right now that the process will take about 14 months. We're already into it, so we're anticipating we would complete this sometime towards the end of 2015. We have a tremendous public outreach effort that's ongoing. Our website is connectthecoastside.com. Since launching that in June, we're averaging over 1,000 unique visits every month. We've secured over 400 individual comments from people telling us what they want to see, what they would like to have concerns about. All of the project information, all the background documents that I've just mentioned, as well as all the presentations we've been making, are available online in our document library. And many of those are also available in Spanish. We'll be having our first public workshop at the end of October, but our virtual workshop is open right now, as I mentioned, so people can go online and make comments and make... Ask questions and give us information. We currently also have an e-news database with about 3,700 Coastside residents, and they're reserving regular updates from us about the process. And we've recently completed our first round of what I would say, presentations and community events. So, we've done workshops with our senior Coastsiders, with the Hispanic-speaking community in Moon Ridge. We've been with... We'll be going to Brew's and Views in January, which I know is something that Don and I enjoy very much. Been to Rotary. And we're just trying really to get out there as much as we can to really make sure we're talking as many people as possible. Finally, our technical advisory committee has about 27, 28 members and represents diverse viewpoints within our entire Coastside community. They will be represented from the city of Half Moon Bay. There's also, as I mentioned, Midcoast Community Council, the Harbor District, the Chamber of Commerce, various environmental concerns, as well as those that represent specific types of activities like biking and pedestrian. Next slide. I hope you will all take the opportunity, if you haven't done so already, to go to that website and take the moment that it will take to give us your opinion and views about what you'd like to see or what your concerns are moving forward. We will not be able to address everything in this plan. It's not a very specific, like here's a crosswalk here sort of thing. We're looking at very big investments that will make a real impact in the ability for the Coastside to accommodate that future growth and make sure that our transportation continues to be effective and affordable. In terms of contact information, as Don mentioned, James Hinchcam is with us tonight. He's the project manager for the county of San Mateo. And Bill Loudon is our project team manager. He's with DKS Associates. Our contact information is available here tonight. It's also available online. All three of us are available to answer any questions you might have about the process or how it might affect Half Moon Bay. And with that, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council or comments? Vice Mayor.
Hi, Kendall, thanks. This was a great project, and I'm glad to see that the shuttle and the transit along the Coastside, both for school and for people during the day, is really important. How long is the survey period open till?
This will be open until the middle of October. We will be closing that probably around October 15th, 16th. And then, we'll be reporting out all of the comments that were received during that period, as well as the technical analysis at that workshop in October. And at that point, we'll be able to present to the public some opportunities and options for their consideration about directions that we might like to move going forward. Thanks.
Councilman McQuillan?
Thank you. Thanks, Kendall, for the presentation. Could you remind us the URL?
Sure. Connectthecoastside.com.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. I think without a doubt, Team San Mateo County will... City of Half Moon Bay will be doing whatever we can to ensure this process moves along smoothly as we... As smooth as you can with the Coastside. But Half Moon Bay is willing and ready to step up, I believe. So, thank you. Supervisor Horsley.
Just one last thing is that one of the things that I want to point out, Kendall actually lives on the coast. So, we actually, a lot of times, get criticized and some, you know, residents will say, gee, you're a consultant, they don't live on the coast, they don't understand the coast. Kendall lives on the coast. So, we really addressed that issue. The other is we've had people say, gee, you're doing so many things, why not just focus on one? You can't. Really have to look at the totality of it. And that's why we have the parking, the transportation, Princeton Plan, working with the city of Half Moon Bay. Really, they all work hand and glove. And we're really pleased with the working relationship we have with the city of Half Moon Bay. And thanks for giving us this time this evening.
Thank you, Don. And Kendall's husband, the former planning director, Steve, good seeing you. So, thank you.
And by the way, when we go to Brew's and Views, she does most of the talking as well. Thanks.
Very good. So, moving along, mayor's announcements. You know what? I don't have anything... Anyone can help me out here on upcoming... I know Chamber of Commerce has their dinner at La Nibia Winery Saturday night, I believe, I know Chamber of Commerce has their dinner at La Nibia Winery Saturday night, I believe, because they asked me for a donation. Punks.
So there is a community meeting at Main Street Park on September 25th for getting input on the general plan, conducted in all Spanish.
If not, we'll move on to report out a closed session, and we've been very fortunate. City Attorney, no report out of closed session at this time. City Council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Patrick, please.
Well, I was in New York on vacation, so I didn't have to go to any meetings, but I wanted to say that I did get to visit the World Trade Center and the museum and also the two ponds that they had there. It was very moving. And when we were there, they had told us only one living tree had survived, which was a pear tree. And so I really wanted to find that pear tree. So I found a guide and I said, where's the pear tree at? And he goes, right there. So it was right where I was standing, but I didn't know it was the tree. They don't have it identified, but they do have it supported. And so I'm assuming they didn't identify it because people probably would go and pick off a leaf and say, oh, I want a souvenir from the pear tree. There would be no more pear tree. But then I also got to go to Mamma Mia and Aladdin. So I did get a nice vacation. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor. Have you been voting on your Scottish separation there and all that stuff?
No, I'm not allowed to. Neither is my mother. You have to be living in Scotland at the time. I did attend the LEAK Conference of California council members and mayors, and a lot of the presentations were interesting to us, and some of them coincided with a lot of work we're doing. A lot of people are updating their planning and looking at new ways for outreach. Big conversations were around recreation and how to change the model of that. And I was able to have a conversation with several people. And they've asked us, we will have gone through about a year by the time next year, if we could talk at the next conference with our unique partnership with the Boys and Girls Club with doing recreation. There was also a topic on skate parks. And people were very interested in what we were doing at our skate park as well. So a lot of good information. And I have some information on new technologies and software for staff that might be interested in, so I'll pass that along as well. Also, the football team has a promotion, I think it's still going on, but there's these great cards. For $20, you get $500, $600 worth of services here on the coast. I have one for each of you. It's only $20. You get golf for half price. No, no, it's my gift to you. It's my gift to you. And everywhere from Cameron's to the golf course, to even money off at Mullins and to a lot of the different restaurants here in the coast. So if you know a high schooler, they're raising friends with a high school, go ahead and get this. It's a great value. There you go. You're welcome.
Very good. Councilmember Alafano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a busy few weeks, so I'll go through these rather quickly. The dog park opening was a lot of fun, and I think we do need a timeout location here too. On the 25th, we had a SAM meeting, and I will tell you again, and Rick can agree with this, I think, our SAM meetings are going much better. I think we're finding common ground and we're accomplishing a lot more. Was over at New Leaf, and they had the Friends of the Library set up there, set up a tent and helped them sign people up. And it's interesting, people kind of shy away because they think you're doing something political. And then when they hear the word "library," then they kind of warm up and they're willing to talk to you. And it's amazing how many people sign up as Friends of the Library. At SAM, we have a Recycled Water Committee going. I'm not going to get into great detail yet because right now, we're in the midst of getting the other agencies to sign on to the principles. Once all the agencies agree with the principles, then I think we're going to probably come out with maybe a press release explaining what Phase One's going to look like and what our hopes are. But it's very promising. Coastside Collaborative meets here once a month. Derek Alvarado runs it. And this time, they had a deputy sheriff who does the crisis intervention training. If you'll see them, if they're qualified, they'll have a little CIT on their uniform. It was very interesting listening to the kind of training they put the deputies through, what they look for, and how they deal with situations. So I think it's something from a city standpoint, we're going to look more into in the future. At the Chamber, we had the Government Affairs meeting. Very good. And that afternoon, we had the 25th celebration for Carolyn Weigant, 25 years with the city. It was very nice to see how dedicated people like Caroline are and how appreciative they are. And I think vice versa, we really appreciate the great work our staff does. And I know sometimes we don't all get a chance to come into City Hall. We just see it from the outside, but there's some really great people that work inside City Hall. And then, like Rick, Mayor was saying, he met with Tom McGurk, and I met with him for coffee the other day. The facility, I think it used to be called Rogue Chef, he's looking to open up a new facility, a new-style restaurant there. And again, he made very nice comments about planning. Oh, they're gone. No, Dante's still here. And it's nice to hear that. And I did hear somebody who wasn't as pleased with planning. I said, I'll tell you what, if you have an issue with planning, get ahold of me. We'll sit down with the planning people, we'll find out where it was. We want planning to go smooth. We had the city booth at the farmer's market this last Saturday. It was very interesting. Some of the questions people ask are very good. And I really have to commend our planning staff for putting out all the extra effort to try and get the word out there. General plan's not very exciting, but it's critical. We all understand how critical it is. I know the library gets more attention, but general plan's very important. So I think staff's going to keep doing these kinds of things. And I think Rick said there's another meeting coming up. And then the last thing was, we had a really nice event Saturday night at IDES, the Boys and Girls Club, called Building the Dream. And they gave a great presentation of how close they are to actually breaking ground for this beautiful new double gymnasium with beautiful seats that are going to go in there. It was a really great presentation. They're about $2 million shy, and I will tell you, from some of the checks I heard certain people wrote, they're going to hit their $2 million. So I really, I can't say enough for the Boys and Girls Club, and I'm very happy we're able to work with them and make these kinds of things happen on the coast side.
Councilwoman McCallcheck. Thank you. I have a bit of a list here. So I want to totally agree with your comments on the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastside I attended that event as well, Building the Dream. We got to see the sketches and the concepts for the new gymnasium. And it's another example of great collaboration on the coast. We've got collaboration with Boys and Girls Club for the gymnasium and our skate park, collaboration with the Beautification Committee for our Macduja Park, and collaboration with the county and the library. So that, I think, is really multiple examples of how well we're working together with all our related organizations. Thank you, Marina, for this. You saved me 20 bucks because my rule on camera, my rule is always, if a well-spoken high school kid comes up to me for a fundraiser, I will always say yes. As evidenced by the year I bought 35 boxes of Girl Scout cookies. So I did attend the dog park ribbon cutting, and what a fun event, such a great turnout. I posed with Rosie. I totally borrowed a dog because I don't have one. And I want to, Marcia, I want to thank you and your organization for your funding support as well on that project and your great ideas and the services you provide for the dog owners in the community. One more comment on the Boys and Girls Club event. What a great cross-section of our community who attended the event. The generosity was vast, and it was noteworthy who was there and who wasn't there, and it was really just showing a sign of support for the kids.
I'm a young man.
Please.
I think the highlight of the program was the young boy, Sebastian, who started as a Boys and Girls Club member and is now a junior at the high school. And what an elegant speech he gave. And I think he's the one that just sold. I think that's why people donated. They saw the outcome, you know, of what that program has done for the kids here on the coast side.
I attended the fourth anniversary celebration of an organization called ALS, and I'll butcher the Spanish, but it's Ayuntando Latinos a Sonar. And it's a folk ballet group started by a young woman on the coast. It's their fourth year. I was privileged to present a proclamation from the mayor to acknowledge that work. And what they do is amazing. Started from an idea, and they get together several times a week. They provide, they have folk dancing, so there's identity with their own culture. And they brought in tutors and tutoring. The children's grades have gone up, their behavior's gotten better. And all just started because a young woman said, you know, I think we need to provide some more things for our children. And I know the Boys and Girls Club is looking to be a partner with them as well. But so, to the mayor, thank you for the proclamation I was able to present. They were quite honored. Let's see, I attended the, I think we talked about, we've not had a meeting since, our emergency meeting on the John Hernandez Bridge. I don't think so. So we had the emergency meeting related to the John Hernandez Bridge, and we're here, we'll have that on the agenda again tonight. But at that meeting, it was noteworthy that we made a pretty significant gesture towards state parks by budgeting $100,000 to say, we are prepared to help you get moving on a project, and it's just on the table. I thought that was an important gesture from us. And I attended the Sewer Authority Midcoast Meeting, and let's let you know, I introduced an idea that will come back to the table at our next meeting, to formalize a code of conduct for SAM vendors. And I've heard a few unpleasant things find their way back to me. And I think anybody that works for our city or for any entity we support needs to have appropriate behavior in decorum, and so I brought that forward. Also, Alan, forgot to mention, he was designated Chair of the Recycled Water Committee. So that's rah rah for him. And lastly, well, two more things. I worked, I attended the skate park planning meeting. And so our skate park has a great design. I spoke at that meeting, and we got input from young skaters, old skaters. The new park concept is pretty cool. It's for the new kid that gets a skateboard, a new skater gets a skateboard on his birthday and can barely stand on it, to somebody who can do crazy tricks, the new park design will accommodate that whole spectrum. I asked the skaters to make it tough for us. I said, you know, we have a limited budget, but make it tough for us. Make our decision hard. And they came through with a signature element in the design where you can skate into a crescent moon. Only place, if we build that, the only place in the world you can skate into the moon. And that'll be our signature, our signature element. And then lastly, I spent Saturday with Councilmember Alafano at the farmer's market and staff, sharing with the community, getting input on our major projects, the planning process at the library, the skate park, and Macduja Park. Lots of great feedback, and I really believe going out to the community where they flow naturally is the best way for us to get feedback. That's really paying off. And those were my other. Oh, and I, we held a voter registration fiesta on Sunday where we basically shared with the community an opportunity to ask questions about the city. I had a Spanish translation. Questions and concerns were shared, and I did my best to answer them. No big surprises, traffic was pretty high up on that list of concerns. And we were also at that meeting able to get a significant number, we distributed surveys, general plan surveys, to the whole community. And we were, early on, we were surprised to see a very low number of Spanish-language or Latino families returning their surveys. So we had a pretty full house, full room, and we got a large number of surveys completed. And those went to our planning staff, and that data will be tabulated, and really an example of us trying to be very inclusive in that process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll get through it as quick as I can. Pastor Orliki, you mentioned that you were going to have an invitation to a forum regarding human trafficking at our Coastside Baptist Church. I just needed the date.
Oh, it'll be October 4th.
Thank you very much. So October 4th, that was a civic announcement. So thank you, Pastor, for bringing this to my attention. So I'll get through mine as quick as possible. I think the biggest one was Saturday night, without a doubt. The collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club, and it's unfortunate, some of the other candidates weren't there. This whole council was in attendance and did a great job. People really are engaged in the partnership this community is serving with the school district and the Boys and Girls Club. We got a lot of wonderful compliments. We got compliments on the projects that we're undertaking with the Boys and Girls Club. This newsletter was wonderful. Skate park funding, $500,000, is completed. They do have full $500,000 funding for the skate park. This new facility that will be across the street here on the south side of Kelly is, will be state-of-the-art with private funding, a large majority of put in by individuals that really care about this coast side. They're in there, they're engaged, excuse me, and they care, they want to see us grow with the youth. They don't want to tear down the city. And so I think that's very important for all of us to recognize that importance there. So I can't say enough for that Saturday night. As busy as we all are, we were there. So at this time, I think that concludes our reports. No Organization Exfunds, City Manager, Magna first. And first, did Councilwoman McCallcheck do all right on that Spanish translation there?
She did awesome. Muy bien.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to be here. Thank you very much. I had an opportunity to get out. I've been here for, I think I'm on day 10 today. So it's been great. I've had an opportunity to get out and meet lots of people already, and I look forward to doing more of that. And I ask for the community's patience. I do want to be able to meet each of the businesses and lots of each, each one of you who are here and elsewhere. But I'm going to try to do that, at least get out, pardon me, at least get out and visit with the two or three people a week, and then just try to get through folks that way. So that's my goal. I also wanted to, I think already has been mentioned, the farmer's market. A couple of people have mentioned it under different circumstances, but I think it was a great success. I think it's something that we want to, I've not had an opportunity to debrief with staff precisely on that, but I've heard lots of positive comments. And so we want to take a look at that and see how we might do that perhaps in the future or do other events similar that way so we can do a better job of outreach and go to the community instead of expecting the community always to come to us. And then just wanted to mention, in my very short time here, we have a very good staff and have been spending a great deal of time, you'll see on the next, later in the agenda, the Pillars Creek Bridge has taken a great deal of time, of staff time, and folks are working very, very hard to make sure that that gets open for the community.
Thank you very much. This time, I have no cards for public forum. We do have a number of other cards. We have the consent calendar, and I've been asked to pull Agenda Item 4. And so we will go ahead and take a motion for the consent calendar, and we will pull 4, and then we will hear 4 and move on. So at this time, motion to accept the consent calendar.
Move to, I move to approve the consent calendar items 1 through 7, less item 4.
Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So ordered. Is this a late card?
Public forum.
Public forum, we've already passed it. It's too late. I believe you could speak to other agenda items.
Agenda item 4.
Okay, so we do have, okay, Agenda Item 4. No problem. So we'll go ahead and hear Agenda Item 4, Brief Staff Presentation, and then we have two individuals interested to speak to it. And also, I have, this one here has no agenda. Oh, public forum. Rick, well, I don't make an exception here. You can talk to me after, and we will figure out what's going on. And this is about crosswalks. We'll do what we can to talk you and I to see if we can get this out right away for you. How's that? Fair enough? Good. Thank you. So, item 4, please. Legal counsel gives a brief update there, and then we will hear, or would you rather hear the cards first to see what their issue is?
Well, I can just introduce it real briefly. This is an amendment to the city's Conflict of Interest Code, the FPPC regulations that require that you review your conflict of interest code periodically to update it.
Maybe I could just speak a little louder, Tony. Maybe I could just speak a little louder, Tony. I don't know if it's coming through clear enough.
This is an amendment to the city's Conflict of Interest Code. Under the regulations of the Fair Political Practices Commission, the city is required to review its Conflict of Interest Code biennially, every two years, and make sure that it's current with the existing organizational structure of the city. The Conflict of Interest Code designates the classifications of city officials and employees that are required to file a Form 700 Statement of Economic Interest, and also designates the types of investments or other financial interests that are required to be disclosed. As you are aware, the organizational structure of the city has changed over the past two years significantly, and this is simply an update to make the Conflict of Interest Code consistent with your organizational structure. So, with that, I'm happy to respond to any council member questions or comments.
So, through the chair, our contract employees are not listed, since they simply are not city employees, correct? Because they have their conflict of interest through their other employment.
That's not exactly correct. The contract employees would be, would fall within the classification of consultant under our conflict, under our Conflict of Interest Code. So, the question then is, what does the, what role does the consultant play for the city? And depending upon the types of services performed, then those contract staff would be required to file a Form 700.
Not clearly. Because if we have positions eliminated, then those positions are, are not part of this, right? Correct?
The positions that were eliminated, those functions are mostly being served by pursuant to the contracts. So, yes, those positions are still required to file a Form 700 Conflict of Interest Statement. The FPPC regulations deal with this very specifically, and they state that a person who pursuant to a contract, a consultant, who serves in a staff capacity and participates in making governmental decisions, or performs the same or substantially all the same duties for the agency as otherwise would be performed by an individual holding a position specified in the Conflict of Interest Code, is required to file as a consultant.
First card, Mr. Raabach, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Harvey Raabach, 464 Pine Avenue. When I saw this consent item, I saw that the Public Works Director/City Engineer and the Planning Director were both omitted from the people who need to form, file Form 700. Now, these are both very important positions. These are positions, we need to know what sort of conflict of interest these two individuals have. So, I urge the council not to allow these two people not to file Form 700. It's really important that we have some transparency on these two important positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ruddock, please. And then, you can respond to those for us, City Attorney, later.
Deborah Ruddock, 367 Metzger Street, Half Moon Bay. So, I share Mr. Raabach's concerns. Of all the people who should form, file 700, yeah, Form 700s, the Planning Director and the Engineering or Public Works Director make decisions all the time, sometimes out of the purview of the public, that have impacts from tens of thousands to millions of dollars. So, I would think that they would be critical to include as designated employees under the Fair Political Practices Act. I just don't see any justification for eliminating them. And currently, those positions, as I understand, are held by Mo Sharma and Bruce Ambo. And I know that Mr. Ambo makes administrative decisions that don't need to be brought before the Planning Commissioner, the City Council, that can have financial impacts. And because consultants or contract employees, they work for private firms, for which the citizenry have no access to their information, because they're not subject to the Public Records Act, the only point where we might be able to understand their conflicts is those Form 700s. We can't PRA a private company and get their financial data, or their personnel data, or anything like that. So, I think it's a real mistake, given the fact that Mr. Sharma's made decisions about hiring engineering firms for the bridge, et cetera, et cetera. They should not be eliminated from your designated employees for, pursuant to the Fair Political Practices Act. I just don't get that, and I think the public would be ill-served by that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, comments to staff, or City Attorney to comment, or Vice Mayor?
I'd just like to hear, are we in compliance with the FPPC?
Well, I hope I've addressed that issue already. As the, the planning manager, the Planning Director, and the City Engineer fall specifically within the definition of a consultant that is required to file a Form 700 under your Conflict of Interest Code and state law. So, so this will not change the requirement that those positions file a Form 700.
So, I think, through the chair, I think the confusion is, it says, excuse me, positions eliminated, which just is listing the positions we eliminated out of our staffing. We're not saying that those people are not, no longer have to file the FPPC. So, I think that's where the confusion is coming from, from the public.
Yes, I, I get that very clearly, and the reason that is, is that those positions are not being filled by employees. And under the regulations, the categories that are required to be included in the Conflict of Interest requirements are city council members, and myself, and the city manager, which are specifically required by the government code, other employees designated by the city council, and consultants, and a person who pursuant to a contract that is not an employee, who participates in making governmental decisions, and--
I will not have response. We are not going to debate this issue. Our staff is speaking, please.
May I just ask an additional question?
Stand down, please. No, you had your, you spoke. We'll let the staff finish commenting, please.
And performs the same or substantially all the same duties for the agency that would otherwise be performed by an individual holding a position in the agency's Conflict of Interest Code, is still required to file. So, in this case, City Engineer, Planning Director are still required to file a Conflict of Interest Form 700 Statement.
They do file. If you would like to make a different statement, not debating, I'd welcome you for one minute to do that. I'm going to do it. Just, I don't want to get into debate. You've heard our legal counsel. You can make a one-minute statement, please, and then stand up.
Actually, it's not a statement. I just have an additional question. So, I didn't notice the consultant on the list of designated employees, but I'm wondering, there's, there's two categories of disclosure for designated employees. There's category 1, and there's category 2. So, my question would be, are you asking the consultants to file, to, to address the various classifications, you know, gifts, whatever it is, both category 1 and 2? Because I think, you know, consultants ought to be supplying both classifications of information. You really get at the heart of, you know, a consultant's conflict of interest, especially under category number 2. So, that would be my question.
Thank you.
Are they subject to both categories 1 and 2? Thank you.
And I think we must state that there's never been a conflict in this city here with us at the city council, with the staff we have. If there's accusations, then step forward and present them. But I don't believe we've ever had any conflict accusations at all with our staff.
According to this Exhibit A to the Conflict of Interest Code, categories of disclosure for designated positions, consultants are listed as category 1, not categories 1 and 2. That includes interests in real property, which is located in whole and part within the boundaries of the city, or within two miles of the boundaries of the city, and investments in or income from persons or business entities engaged in the business of acquisition or disposal of real property within the city.
Counsel, understand the commenters and also staff's response?
Yes, I understand that our, our staff and our consultants are covered by, by the filing, and that's good for me.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, item 4, we could--
I move for adoption.
I'll second.
Move for adoption, and second, any further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Yes.
Councilmember Petridge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fraser?
Yes.
Mayor Mueller?
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on to 8, ordinance and public hearings. And my bridge friends, we're going to get through this quick. This one's pretty quick, so hang in there with us, please. But we do have to follow this agenda to the best of our ability. So, item 8 will be a public hearing. I believe we have, need to open a public hearing?
Yes.
Or staff presentation first?
Yes, please. I will give a brief presentation, and then you can open up the public hearing.
Mike, look, Tony keeps slipping away.
I should go to the iPad, and then my problems would be solved. The item before you is introduction of an ordinance accepting and agreeing to the Coastal Commission's suggested modifications to LCP amendments that the city council considered and approved in 2010 and 2011 affecting Chapters 1802, Definitions, 1805, Water and Sewer Capacity Allocation and Reservation, 1806, Residential Land Use, 1820, Local Coastal Development Permits, 1833, Second Dwelling Units, 1835, Below Market Rate Housing, and 1842, Residential Density Bonus. I heard the mayor's message loud and clear, so I'll make this as brief as possible. The amendments that the council approved were, were a number of items in the zoning code that have been giving the Planning Department and Planning Commission in particular trouble over the past several years. Relatively minor, but created significant problems for people who wanted to do building additions, or build in smaller lots. And they included issues such as lot coverage, setback requirements, building footprints. There were a number of amendments to the affordable housing regulations, including the regulations pertaining to accessory dwelling units and density bonus regulations, the development of exceptional lots, which are lots that were legally created, but then became substandard when, basically, the zoning standards changed as a result of amendments to the, the city's zoning standards. Parking regulations, that the staff, city staff and coastal commission staff met numerous occasions over the past few years in working on a lot of the issues that related to the modifications. And the matter was brought to the coastal commission on July 11th, at which time the coastal commission approved the city's zoning code amendments with a number of modifications to the proposed recommendations. The way this works is that, as you know, the city's zoning code also functions as the implementation plan of your local coastal program, land use plan. And so, in order for those amendments to take effect, they have to be certified by the coastal commission as consistent with coastal policy and coastal act. So, that's what occurred in 2010 and 2011. I would say that the vast majority of the proposed amendments were approved by the coastal commission. Others, they are recommending that you consider modifications to those amendments. And the modifications specifically relate to the definition of exceptional lots, which is a non-substantive modification. Amendments of the R1 standards, particularly relating to some exceptions to the standard regulations that were proposed by the city council for disabled access, second dwelling units, below-market rate housing, which included a provision that would have made low or affordable housing projects qualify to purchase priority water service connections from the Coastside County Water District, as well as regulations relating to density bonus. As I said, we had extensive, extensive discussions with the coastal staff at several meetings. Many of the proposed changes clarify, and in some cases improve upon, the language that, that was submitted to the council by staff and ultimately approved by the council. Another, others are areas in which we agreed to disagree. But recognizing that the matter had been sort of languishing for the past several years, and with the prospect of a more comprehensive update to the zoning code and the general plan on the horizon, we decided to basically concur with the staff's recommendation to the coastal commission, and are now recommending for you tonight to approve these proposed amendments. I think, in general, it's fair to say that a number of the coastal commission recommended changes are more restrictive than originally approved by the city, particularly as it relates, unfortunately, to affordable housing. The density bonus, accessory dwelling unit, and priority water service connections would have really given a boost to the city to encourage more affordable housing development. The regulations are still an improvement, and so, you know, we do, we are making steps forward in regard to affordable housing, but, but not quite as far as we would have hoped. If you approve these regulations, then we send it back up to the coastal commission, so that the executive director can acknowledge your acceptance of these modifications, and then they'll go into effect. So, the recommendation is to introduce this proposed ordinance, accepting and agreeing to the California Coastal Commission's suggested modifications to LCP Amendment HMB Major 1-11 affecting Chapters 1802, Definitions, 1805, Water and Sewer Capacity Allocation and Reservation, 1806, Residential Land Use, R1, R2, and R3, 1820, Local Coastal Development Permits, 1833, Second Dwelling Units, 1835, Below Market Rate Housing, and 1842, Residential Density Bonus. I'm happy to respond to any council member questions or comments. That concludes my report.
I believe I have to open a public hearing, and I have no cards on this item, so I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions of staff?
I guess, for me, the disheartening portion was the affordability of housing here in Half Moon Bay, and the, the things that the coastal commission has changed in our, in our regards to that. And I just encourage this council to continue, as you go through the general plan and go through these other things, to make sure that we can get some of that affordability back to Half Moon Bay, because right now, the cost of housing is just outrageous, and we just are going to price ourselves right out. And if we can't get those into our general plan and into our, our housing element, we're going to be in trouble, not only with our citizens, but with ABAG and everybody else that are saying, "We have to have affordable housing." And I'm not quite sure that everybody understands that we're in double jeopardy, because we're trying to do it, and then we get, you know, cut down at the legs at the coastal commission with affordability. So, I encourage this council to not let that drop off your radar.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
And I agree with Naomi's comments. There is a group currently, Judy Macias, a community member who's worked on many things through the years, has a group called The Village. And one of the specific things they are addressing is below-market rate housing. It's, it's really housing to keep people here in the community, so they can stay within the community. They may have raised their family here, owned their own, owned their home for 40, 50 years, and they find themselves a widow or a widower. They want to stay in this community. Their house rich, but can they move to a smaller place? Or is it a new family? Or is it some of our service workers to a smaller place? We've got beautiful homes here, and our houses are all going up. But in order for people in our community to stay in our community, instead of leaving the place that they've lived for 50 years, to find a smaller place, we've got to be able to, to do that in the future. So, I know that group is working and lobbying toward that, and I think that's really important for us. Or unfortunately, it will only be the very, very wealthy that will end up living here in this beautiful area, and not the people who would like to remain here through their life.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we can-- Otherwise, we can move this forward. Does it require a motion?
Yes.
Yep.
I move to introduce an ordinance accepting and agreeing to the California Coastal Commission's suggested modifications to the LCP amendment HMB MAJ 1-11 affecting chapters 18.02 definitions, 18.05 water and sewer capacity allocation and reservation, 18.06 residential land use, R1, R2, R3 dwelling units, 18.35 below market rate housing, and chapter 18.42 residential density bonus.
Move then?
Second.
Second. Any other questions and comments? Not roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alafano?
Yes.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Yes.
Councilmember Patridge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Muller? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Fraser?
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Doesn't matter. Yes, we're all here together. So we'll move on to item nine, and then we will... Item nine should be fairly brief also?
Yes, I will present that item as well. The item before you is an amendment to the PS zoning district regulations. The PS zoning district refers to public and quasi-public land uses, and those, for instance, your community center and city hall are subject to the regulations contained in chapter 1809 of the zoning code. Permitted uses in the PS zoning district currently include fire stations, schools, libraries, churches, airports, hospitals, cemeteries, and parks and civic center. The proposed amendment would add to that list animal hospital. And so, the land use issues surrounding the location of animal hospital is, are quite similar to those with regard to hospitals. So if you approve this amendment, a person could locate an animal hospital in the PS zoning district as you currently permit for hospitals that serve people. So that concludes my report. I'm happy to respond to any council member questions or comments.
Question?
Is there a difference in the wording of animal hospital and veterinary services? Because around the corner, there is, nearby, there is a veterinary.
Those are distinctly described in the zoning code, so veterinary clinics as permitted in commercial zoning districts in Half Moon Bay are subject to use permit regulations, I believe. This is specific to an animal hospital. Yeah.
At this time, I'll open a public hearing. No further cards. It seems like it's our little animal night tonight here for a while here. We want to make sure with, we have a place that can care for all our cats and dogs and big and small animals. So, close the public hearing. Any other questions of staff? Yes, Scott.
I do have one question for staff. I'm curious, I'm curious why this is coming up now. What's the catalyst for this item to go to our agenda?
It's actually the product of discussions that we've had with a veterinarian in Half Moon Bay that is interested in locating an animal hospital in property that she currently owns that is not in the PS zoning district, but considered applying for an amendment to the zoning designation of her property, which is currently in urban reserve. We discussed that with coastal commission staff in one of our many exchanges over the past year or so, and they recommended that we consider advising her to apply to rezone her property as a PS zoning district and amend our code to include animal hospital within the range of permitted uses in the PS zoning district. And the concern that they expressed was not particularly with locating an animal hospital in this particular location, but in approving a commercial zoning designation for property that currently is already developed but within the zoning district that's identified as urban reserve.
I'll move to introduce an ordinance amending chapter 18.09 public and quasi-public land use, PS, to include animal hospital to the list of principally permitted uses enumerated in section 18.09.020 permitted uses.
Second. Move to second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alafano?
Yes.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Yes.
Councilmember Patridge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fraser? Mayor Muller?
Yes, so ordered. And thank you for our guests staying here through this. Now we're to our item 10. As you can see, this council and staff just doesn't work on bridges. We have a lot of items we're working on, and I can guarantee you, staff has worked on this bridge from day one, and trust me, I think they even at one point excluded me on conference calls, so we're letting them handle it, and we're gonna... I'm not sure if Alex is going to handle it along with Mugda and all of our team here.
Yes, we have, we have a full team on this project. I was able to come to your meeting before I was on board officially and could clearly see that this council understands the importance of this bridge. I had an opportunity to go out and take a look at it myself. The staff has been working incredibly hard, has had several meetings with state parks and others, several agencies, trying to figure out how to make this happen. You allocated some dollars to try to start the process of permitting and design for relief of this bridge, so that this bridge can be fixed, repaired, in order. Based on our conversations with state parks and others, it seems that the timeline for that and the ability of funding, which of course you also heard from them here, really puts this project out at about three years, four years, and that's just not acceptable. So staff has really worked hard to try to provide, try to explore any option possible to see what could be done. It's been a bit of a moving target. Staff has done a really nice job of pushing a little bit to try to get some response, just try to see what can be done, have tried to include other agencies to see where if we can try to find some funding, try to move this process forward as much as possible. So you have not much by way of a report in terms of a written report, because really it has been evolving every moment. In fact, we have new information as of this afternoon, 5 o'clock. So I'll ask Alex to go ahead and provide the information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alex Kojekin, deputy city manager here for this great city. I'm here to present just a quick status update on the Pillar Soto's Creek Bridge, also known as the John Hernandez Bridge by most. So the Pillar Soto's Creek Bridge is owned and has been maintained by state parks for the past 20 years. In April of 2014, the bridge was seriously damaged and closed by state parks. State parks has determined that the repair of the bridge is not viable as they presented to you back on August 19th, and has directed its efforts and resources towards the full replacement. The problem with this replacement strategy that state parks has brought forward is the funding. So state parks has put out that it would take about $1.8 million to replace this bridge. To date, staff has worked with state parks and other state agencies, and I'll go into that later on in this presentation with you tonight, and the question of where the $1.8 million is going to come from, we just do not know at this time. The early suggestions are is that it might make it into the state budget for the next fiscal year, but that is July 1st, and as they explained to this council back on August 19th, that once they get the funding in hand, it would take up to two years, the process, in order to replace this bridge. So you're looking at 2017 at its earliest. The bridge went down in 2014. That's about three years of time. So staff kind of started exploring on their own, just trying to uncover any rocks along the way of what we can do to get this great asset open as soon as possible. One of the items was to explore a temporary fix to the bridge, and so Dante Hall, our community development director, will be talking more about that this evening. I wanted to also mention that the council did take a stand on this item on August 25th at a special meeting and went ahead and put up $100,000 for staff expertise and other community resources in an effort to restore this bridge at this time. So I'm going to go ahead and pass this off to Dante to give you more of, more resource or, or no, wait up, I have one more slide. Kind of getting ahead of myself, I'm sorry. The other item is the work to date, so we've been, I want to get it out to the public to let them know that city staff has been working very hard with numerous agencies, and this includes state parks, Senator Jerry Hill's office, Assembly Member Rich Gordon's office, the coastal conservancy, the coastal commission, California fishing game, Army Corps of Engineers, and other Half Moon Bay residents and technical experts that have come here before you, asking to give their in-kind services to this project. The issues that we've discussed have been cooperative development agreements, funding opportunities, temporary fix options, permanent replacement, permitting engineering, environmental coordination, community member assistance opportunities. We have been very busy trying to do something to get this bridge open. So right now, I'll go ahead and I'll pass it off to Dante Hall that'll go into detail on the temporary fix item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. In our effort to really try to give you some facts and some factors to consider tonight, we looked at kind of the temporary solution, and the first step in that was really to hire, actually engage some structural engineers to go and evaluate the bridge, and we asked them about some concepts that could be possible for us to repair the bridge for the $100,000 that council allocated on the August 25th meeting. Both of the firms came back and said that the damage was very severe, and the standard of repairing the bridge would take a lot more money than $100,000 that was allocated. So we, the perception, I think, that some may have had was that the break or the failure in the bridge was just at the point where the heavy equipment went over. But according to the structural engineers, there is damage along the entire course of the bridge, and that failure could have happened at any point on the bridge. And they said that they would not be able to recommend a strategy for a temporary solution for an amount less than $300,000. So we're looking at at least $300,000, and that's not including any permitting for a temporary solution. So tonight, we wanted to present some of the facts. The temporary solution or fix would guarantee an additional two to three years of life for the existing bridge, and after that, there would have to be some type of evaluation to see how long the bridge could last after that. So as for the consideration for the cost, a temporary solution could be realized in a matter of about months, six months essentially, whereas, as Alex mentioned earlier, a permanent solution couldn't be realized for a number of years. So if council would like staff to explore this option of a temporary solution, we thought about what a repair strategy could be. We can engage a structural engineer firm to develop some repair options, some estimated costs, and also some, the regulatory hurdles that we would have to overcome, and then we would bring that back to the city council at a very, a meeting in the very near future for some direction. There is also a possibility, if we issued a contract as a design-build contract, there's a potential to save some costs and some time in the process. So that's really all I have to say about the temporary repair. I think Alex has some additional information for the permanent fix.
So as our city manager was stating that things are ever-changing, well, this afternoon, we went ahead and we were on a conference call with state officials. Senator Hill's office was kind enough to, the chief of staff from Sacramento was kind to set this meeting up with state parks, coastal conservancy, the city. And the item that we talked about is that the coastal conservancy is willing to entertain, helping fund the planning portion for a permanent fix, and this would help us out. And the earliest they could see the item is in December at their meeting. What we would do is if the council decided to do a temporary fix and the permanent fix, we'd want to have them run on a parallel track, because we can't lose sight of that. Even if you guys decided to do a temporary fix, there still needs to be a permanent fix to this structure. We can't survive with a two to four-year fix. We got to look at the long-term stability of this piece of infrastructure. One of the items that we want to bring to your attention is the leveraging of resources. So the coastal conservancy, with most of their grants, they like to do some sort of match, and what we were thinking about is the $100,000 that you guys, that the council went ahead and approved at the August 25th, maybe taking $50,000 of that as a gesture, telling the coastal conservancy that we would like to put that forward with whatever funding they can come forward with a permanent fix. We still would want to work with Senator Hill's office and Assembly Member Gordon's office to try to get, you know, the permanent construction funding of the $1.8 million for this bridge. So we have to keep that also on our sights and keep that moving forward. And I just want to go ahead and let you guys know once again, and emphasize that at minimum the projected replacement, if we have the money in hand for next year's budget on July 1st, you're looking at the earliest minimum of getting this bridge replaced is 2017. Thank you.
If I may just add, the other, Alex, help me with this recommendation, is that if in fact you wanted us to consider more options or gather more information in terms of a potential temporary fix, we would ask that part of the $100,000 would be used to engage a firm to provide that information.
Thank you. We have a number of cards, and if I may ask you, you know, we're not going to design the bridge tonight. We want you to understand we are moving forward, and we want to hear your input on, see if we're going in the right direction and what direction you want to share with us on your feelings. So we'll start off with the bridge manager, Mr. Hernandez. John Hernandez, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The, I guess on the 17th, or somebody, excuse me, the 19th of August, she had a meeting. I was on vacation, so I was not here, and they mentioned that there was a bridge that was to be given away if all you had to do was unbolt it and carry it here. And I went out to look at it, and it's in Foster City, and it was referred to as the Thermal Fisher Bridge. And I went out and I measured it, and you have 230 feet of bridge and also a platform about 20 by 20 with some stairs hooked up to it. And we also were talking about Sweetwood Bridge that also is needing repair. And I looked at the bridge, and I was going along the idea of temporary repair. Obviously, that would not cover the Seymour, excuse me, the Pillar Soto's Creek 230 feet since it's 400 feet long. As the information came out that a lot of the bridge was in need of repair, which we knew, the part that failed was about 20 feet from the west end, closest to the ocean, and I was thinking that with this bridge as a giveaway, you know, could we put down 55 feet, 60 feet, or 120 feet? And the reason I'm using these numbers right now is there's two sections that are 55 feet long, two sections that are 60 feet long. And again, how are the helicoils that are screwed in the ground to support the bridge, are they in good condition? If they are, I don't see any reason why engineers couldn't figure out how to put some beams across to support a temporary repair, cut out the pieces that are bad, set it on the side, bring in the used one, and set it right down on some supports. And we could go as far as 120 feet of removing the old bridge to find a good support, and... a good support, and in the back of my mind, I had, uh, that the, uh, the other bridge, uh, Sweetwood, is 100 feet long, and since it's made out of steel, these, uh, welders are very good with their craft. They can, uh, set up, cut the bridge down to 100 feet, put plates, supports, uh, with the direction of the bridge. People saying that if he does it this way, it'll still be 5,000, uh, feet of, uh, support of the, the way the bridge is made. Uh, anyway, uh, like I said, this is what I was thinking back and forth, and obviously, uh, the, uh, cost of it, they're giving it to you free, somebody has to unbolt it, they have to set it on a truck, gotta bring it over to Half Moon Bay, set it down, and then figure out, uh, another crane company to pick it up and put it down where they cut out the sections. Uh, anyway, that was my thought, and the stair platform and stuff, I figured maybe we could use that as scrap metal to support the bridge in these beams. Uh, and I just want to thank the City Council, I think you guys have been doing a terrific job supporting us, we know where your heart is, but how do we get the state moving and get the money? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Dave Dixon, please.
Good evening, Council, David Dixon, 30 Ventura Street in Miramar. I've been a bicycle commuter on the coastal trail, uh, every day, rain or shine, for the last seven years, and there are a lot of us out there. This is not just a recreational trail, this is an alternative to the Highway 1 corridor that allows a lot of us to get to work in Half Moon Bay. There are a lot of families out there, a lot of kids, uh, who get to Cunyan Hatch by going down the coastal trail. And now we're, uh, on a, we're on a detour, and with all due respect to its namesake, the Naomi Patridge Trail is kind of dangerous for bicyclists, there's a lot of intersections, I've had some close calls, uh, so there are a lot of us, and you've heard, um, from a lot of us, who are really concerned with getting this bridge back, and I really want to thank the Council for the initiative you've taken. I think if we, I think it's a travesty that we had to entrust a piece of, uh, pieces, if we include the Sweetwood Bridge, of infrastructure that are so important to our community, to an organization that basically just abandoned them on day one, and, and now, and didn't anticipate the need to replace them, and here, now we have a, we have a five-year project. If we have to wait for State Parks, it's going to be five years, three years, no way. It'll be five years. So, you know, I'm glad you folks are putting the pressure on to really find, I'd like to see a, a temporary solution, I think there's a lot of creativity and initiative and, and even financial support available from this community. It's important to us, uh, but I think you also need to look at a long-term partnership with State Parks that, that, uh, involves the community in these bridges, and we, we really have to think about the bridge at Sweetwood, because that's going to be next, and, uh, without that one, we don't have a trail either. So, I just really want to thank you for the initiative, and I hope you keep up the, keep up the work, and thank, thank you to the city staff as well.
Thanks, Dave. May I ask, uh, so you're pushing me for temporary? Do you think we're kind of leaning temporary first, or temporary?
I don't care if it's planks and sticks and rocks, we'd like to have a way to get across the creek, you know?
I, I, you and I build pipelines, Dave, we know what it takes, but, so thank you very much. I'm gonna put you down as a temporary fix with, uh, permanent in the long run. Fred, please, Mr. Brendan. There he is, over there, I'm sorry. And I'll be...
Good evening, Mr. Dave, Mayor, uh, City Council members. Uh, I am a new member, I'm a new resident, uh, of Half Moon Beach, having moved here in July, and, uh, I'm also, I'm avid cyclist together with my family, and, uh, it was, with a bit of dismay, but, uh, when we found out that the bridge was out, um, I have been following through a blog, all the activity and all the initiative that is going on, into coming up with a solution to this problem. And all I can say is that, uh, I appreciate all the work that is being done, and I think that there's a lot of creative minds, and, uh, I would like to say that I think, talking to my neighbors and talking to members of the community, I feel that if there's anything that we can do, as far as fundraising, as far as ideas, as far as anything that may, might be viable, to, to be able to get this project going, it would be, uh, it would be very much appreciated. I would hope that it, it's not gonna be five years. Uh, I don't know if there's a temporary solution, I have looked at that bridge, and it looks, uh, pretty bad, but, uh, whatever feasible solution there might be, uh, it would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to the community. Uh, Timothy, please. Saw you pacing back and forth back there.
Uh, my back, my back isn't feeling, my back isn't feeling good in those chairs. My name's Tim Pond, I live at 651 Potter. I actually have talked to, um, Department of Wildlife for both the state and the, uh, United States, and I, they didn't, the person in charge for this area hadn't talked to anybody from any permitting process except for State Parks, and she had visited it once and looked at it. My understanding of the permit process is that could be pretty quick and pretty cheap, if we keep the existing footings. So, the first thing that has to be done, in my mind, is to verify that they are somewhat good, good enough to put a bridge on. In fact, those piers could actually be replaced five years out, if, if we leave them and find out that they're no good. We could camera down inside, we could partially excavate around one of them, we could figure out why these electrodes were disconnected, and how long ago they were disconnected, and the State Parks could actually hook them back up, because this bridge is a huge failure of government to keep, to keep it open, and even though we've known this electrode has been disconnected for months, they haven't gone over there and hooked it up with a piece of wire, which is about all it takes, and it's amazing that all these people, in their combined efforts, haven't done the simplest $1,000 repair to the electrode system protecting this foundation. I also think that a temporary fix is probably not going to work, that we need to look at replacing this bridge next year with a $600,000 prefabricated bridge, and set it on the existing footing with engineering, and this can be done. And it's not the permitting processes that the, um, I actually talked to the guy at Army Corps of Engineers, he said it would be a waiver, as long as we did not go into the creek stream bed, there would be no permit required, it would take them four or five months to review that. The Fishing Game California, 60-day review period, up to three months to issue a permit. All that we really need to do is get a design, and we don't even need an engineering stamp to go in to look for the review process, get it over to the Corps of Engineers, say we're gonna replace the top of the bridge, get it over to them, get a waiver, and then we're down to the, to the United States Fish and Wildlife, and, uh, you know, the State Fish and Wildlife, which seemed fairly straightforward to me, and I've been, I've permitted a lot of projects. I'm just discouraged at the three years, I'm discouraged at the amount of money they're, they're saying this will cost, I don't think it's anywhere near that. I think those footings are actually probably in pretty good condition, and I'm just amazed that they're continuing to corrode, and that no one has taken the initiative to spend the five grand to reconnect the electrode system. And I, I, you know, I'm saddened that this bridge is not in place for my kids, really, and for other people in the community, and I don't believe the three years. And I think this is a chance to step up and say, no, we want it done this year, next year at this time, this bridge could be in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter, please, and followed by Scott.
Mayor Mueller, uh, members of the City Council, I'm Walter Sensing, I reside at 439 Keyhole, here in Half Moon Bay, and I actually have written a little something that I wanted to say today, rather than just talking off the top of my head. First, I'd like to, uh, thank Alex and Dante for the work they've done on moving this thing forward, I, I know you guys get it, uh, I know the City Council gets it, uh, I know we get it, um, and, uh, thank you very much for, for expediting this process. As you know, the coastal trail is important to many of the people here tonight, as well as to many of, uh, others on the coast. We are here tonight to show our support for our City Council's efforts to bring the State Parks to the table, and to try to solve this problem in a timely manner. This is such a cherished local resource, we need our city leaders standing up and fighting for all of us on this issue. I'm here tonight to say thank you, and for recognizing the need and for responding to it. In the past couple of months, we've had, uh, we have made multiple contacts with our elected representatives, Jerry Hill, Rich Gordon in Sacramento, and, and Don Horsley, a member of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. They all pledged their support, but we clearly need local leadership to formulate a plan to move this thing forward. It seems to me that any solution is going to have to be a locally crafted solution, as we know, there are people here on the coast with the right stuff. Since the special session that the City Council held back on August 25th, a number of people have approached me regarding the formation of a Concerned Citizens Committee for the John Hernandez and Sweetwood Bridges. In response, the Fix the Bridges Committee, otherwise known as FTB Committee, uh, was formed and is currently has, uh, 14 members and is growing. Uh, we stand ready and willing to provide, uh, any future assistance the city might require of such a committee. Uh, we're, we're, we're here to help, and, and we're at your disposal. Meanwhile, we will continue with our efforts to provide citizens with an opportunity for input and involvement, and to reach out for support wherever we can find it. Our goal is a prompt resolution to the John Hernandez and Sweetwood Bridges, and resumption of full access to the coastal trail that we all enjoy. And, uh, I would just like to say that, uh, I am in favor of a temporary solution, uh, put me down for that, um, if it means we're waiting three or four years. If, if we can do, as Tim has said, uh, a permanent solution in a few months, which I'm, I'm a little skeptical of, I have to say, but if that's possible, I'm all for the city saving money and getting this thing rolling, uh, fairly quickly. But if we're looking at a prolonged, uh, outage, I see no other, uh, alternative than to, uh, to get it back in action with a temporary fix in parallel with a long-term solution. Thank you.
Thanks for all your work, Walter, and you know where, where I am, and you come by and talk to me when you can, and so, uh, we'll, we'll keep pulling, pulling, pulling in the right direction with staff. Uh, Scott, please. The last card is Julie.
My name's Scott McVicker, I'm at 507 Parisima, and, uh, also in Highland, in Half Moon Bay. You'll have to put me down as a no temporary fix, please. Uh, my qualifications, I'm a licensed engineer in the state, also carrying the designation Structural Engineer. When I heard this problem popped up, I went down on Sunday and looked at that bridge, and saw the deterioration, and walked under it, to see the members that were just falling away from it due to rust and deterioration. So, with that, I attended your emergency meeting, just to listen, see where you were going. And then, looking at the kind of paperwork that you're forced to deal with every council meeting, it was time that I put together a little packet for your home study, and I distributed one copy to the city for their records and one to each of you, so that you can see what maybe should be done. In that package, the copy of the Bueller and Bueller Report, they are the structural engineers that worked for the state, who declared the bridge dead. That's it, dead. No sense in, uh, spending a bunch of money trying to put in a temporary fix in a dead bridge. Uh, the, the report is, uh, in fact, the particular phrasing is highlighted in yellow next to the red tab. Uh, I've also included some large sheets to show you, uh, what a temporary fix, fix looks like. It may be able to support the bridge on the low sections, but as soon as you go across that deep channel, there is no fix. And taking apart a bridge that's in the air and fixing it at the same time is impractical. So, please, I know it's urgent that this be fixed, but let's not take the wrong action and try and fix something and assume a liability that the city cannot afford. It's not practical to fix the bridge. Uh, also in that little package is what, uh, maybe a replacement bridge should look like. We've had steel, steel didn't work. Wood, can't span 100 feet with wood practically, you've seen an example of what bridges work in this town, that was in the homeless shelter, or concrete. And the three sections of the bridge which are low could be replaced, starting very promptly, with concrete, and then, maybe the 100-foot section from this gentleman here could be used to replace span number three in that report. That's a promising path, but, let's stop the temporary fix before it gets started, and save your money for the replacement structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we do have the handout here, also Scott, so we'll definitely study it. Julie, please, and that concludes our cards on this item.
Uh, good evening, um, city staff and council members, I'm Julie Barr, I live at 792 Pillar Cidos in Half Moon Bay, and I live in the Casa del Mar neighborhood specifically, and I'm here tonight to speak to you not only as a concerned citizen, but as a physician, I work full-time at the VA Hospital in Palo Alto. Um, as you know, the bridge is 20 years old, and the, um, walkway of the bridge was created, I understand, out of what is now would be illegal pressure-treated lumber. It wasn't illegal at the time, but, um, since 2004, you can't purchase that wood in the United States, because it poses a significant environmental hazard. Pressure-treated wood, this type, is, um, treated with a mixture of pesticides, um, the EPA's words, not mine, called chromated copper arsenate, or CCA. Arsenic kills wood-eating insects, and copper kills fungus, and that's what keeps pressure-treated wood hanging around longer than untreated wood. So, essentially, pressure treatment is to wood what embalming is to humans. As of, um, January of 2004, the manufacture of pressure-treated lumber for residential use was banned in the U.S. because of the risk of arsenic, as it posed to the environment and, and as a health hazard. Arsenic, it turns out, uh, leaches out of pressure-treated wood over time, and rubs off on the hands of people who touch it. And weathered pressure-treated lumber, such as what is now covering the surface of the bridge, leaches arsenic faster than newly milled boards. Chromated copper arsenate is 22% pure arsenic by weight, and arsenic is known to be a human carcinogen. When those people who touch arsenic are children, their risk of developing lung and bladder cancer are much higher than for adults. And young children at play, as parents will tell you, put their hands in their mouth approximately, somebody measured this, 16 times a day, an hour, excuse me. In the 1990s, the National Research Council reported that arsenic exposure through drinking water was linked to lung and bladder cancers, and could exert its carcinogenic effects at much lower levels of exposure than previously believed, and children whose livers metabolize arsenic more slowly were shown to be at particular risk. In addition, at very low levels, arsenic interferes with a family of hormones called glucocorticoids, potentially raising the risk for diabetes. Eventually, arsenic and copper leach out of pressure-treated lumber, especially if the woods rained on and contaminated surrounding soil. Previous studies by the EPA of soil under and around pressure-treated structures have been found to contain, the soil's been found to contain concentrations of arsenic far in excess of background levels, and in some cases, far in excess of the cleanup standards of U.S. Superfund sites. We have a lot of pressure-treated lumber out there. Arsenic, like all heavy metals, persists indefinitely in the environment, it's not biodegradable, and it doesn't go away. My concern is that the longer the old bridge remains intact, it continues to decay, and arsenic continues to leak into the soil, essentially, it's become an environmental time bomb, contaminating the Pillar Cidos Creek bed, imposing a significant health risk to the community. I urge the City Council to perform soil testing underneath the bridge for arsenic, and if levels are found to be high, to apply for emergency funding and an expedited permitting process to replace the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, for that, uh, very knowledgeable background there, and thanks for your service to Vets Alafano and myself up here, so we appreciate that. But, I think that's an interesting point, and, uh, we, we'll definitely take note of that, uh, as a different perspective, and see about possibly removing it as quickly as possible, and then, we're, we're gonna have to do soil samples anyway, most likely, so, go ahead, I'm sorry, Dante.
Well, Mayor, I'd, I'd just like to take a second to respond to some of the comments. Um, this, this bridge actually is owned and belongs to, to the state, um, and the temporary solution, I want to qualify what we are recommending, the temporary solution would have to pass the test of being able to be certified by a structural engineer, and that's what we're recommending at staff level. Um, I'm not sure that anything less than that, um, would, would be wise, a wise decision. Um, we have involved and spoken to, um, each of the residents and technical experts that have offered up their services, uh, in past meetings. offered up their services in past meetings to talk about a solution. And we did follow up on the recommendation of the bridge in Foster City. We had our city engineer to go out and take a look at the bridge. And the differences are that our bridge is eight feet wide. The bridge in Foster City is ten feet wide. It is only a hundred and something feet, as the speaker mentioned. Our bridge is 400 feet. It has a concrete platform. We have a wooden platform. So the cost of removing those bridges, staging the equipment, doing all the work to kind of make it fit, and to the standard that may not be able to be certified, you know, I guess that that is a decision for council to make, but that wouldn't be a staff recommendation. There was also a comment about permitting and the speed of permitting. You know, that is true, and permitting schedules really depend on the concept and what you're going to do. Technically, you actually have a lot of different regulatory agencies that have jurisdiction in that corridor. You have the Coastal Commission, you have the Army Corps, you have regional water quality, you have California Fishing Game, you have U.S. Fishing Game. Now, some of those permits will not be required depending on which concept you choose. So what we're recommending is to provide you with more information so you can make an informed decision about options that can be certified, and we will include regulatory agencies and a time schedule in the very near future. And the last thing is, there was a speaker that spoke of the Bueller and Bueller Report that declared the bridge is dead. As the city manager mentioned, as late as this afternoon, we've been in conversations with State Parks and the others. And that question was kind of put to them specifically, and the response was, it's not that they said that the bridge is a lost cause and it could not be repaired, it was that the repair would cost more than they're willing to invest for a temporary solution.
Well, what a great catch, 22, when you're dealing with something that you don't even own. And it's just so unfortunate, and I thank all of you really for your deep concern. You know, if I was king, we'd fix a damn bridge, but I mean, what are we going to do? You know, we have to go through the process, but what I'm suggesting as staff has recommended, we have to get a specific project in place for us to make a decision. We can't just willy-nilly say, let's go fix some boards. I'd want to do that, or let's just throw some concrete pillars in there and put a bridge across there. So I guess my question would be, how soon will we be able to get that back to us? Because winter months are coming, and we know we're not going to be allowed to go near that thing probably once October hits. I'm not, I'm kind of speaking for the Regional Water Quality Control Board. I know their regs quite thoroughly, so.
If council agrees, and we can use the $100,000, that was our portion of that, to do some of this initial work, we can engage a structural engineer to provide a couple of concepts for us to look at, put a finer point on the estimated cost, and also give us an idea of which permits are required from the regulatory agencies for each of the concepts. And we can potentially do that by the beginning of October.
That's great. And simultaneously, we could continue to work with the state and all these other legislative bodies to see if, what the funding is. And I do like your overhead in there, or your PowerPoint regarding liability too. You know, as some of the speakers have said, you know, we're going to end up costing this community tons of money, but we're willing to step up right now. So I'm sorry, I'm going on here, so go ahead and respond.
So the permanent fix is always still on our, still in front of us. We'll be meeting later on this week with the Coastal Conservancy to go over and see what exactly they need in order to discuss the item at their December or January meeting for a permanent fix, at least getting some funding forward.
And I hope the public understands the predicament we're in. This is not a simple thing for us to just say, let's go fix this bridge. But we are stepping up, saying we're going to put $100,000 in there of our money, all your money. And I can just tell you, from my perspective, it's fortunate that we've made good decisions in the past, that we do have some funds available to do this, number one. And number two, you know, Measure O is coming up too, to continue on. Visitors that come to serve on this coast side and visit, let them help pay a little bit too. So that's just my personal feeling right now on that. We do need to continue to have resources to provide all this infrastructure that's not even ours.
Through the mayor. I'm very encouraged with the possibilities of a temporary repair, and the drawings that were presented by the one firm seem reasonable and they seem doable. I think, as we all know, the devil is going to be in the supports. But I, you know, my gut feeling is, I think as a council, we should continue to support the quickest, fastest method to get the bridge operational again. And I also like the fact, in the plans, they take the 12-foot bridge down to, I think, eight feet, and then put in restrictions so there's no tractors, no horses. You're just talking about pedestrians and bikes could go on the bridge. So my suggestion would be, to the rest of the council, hopefully to the staff, is I would believe to recommend we put as much as the $300,000 potentially on the table if this all proves feasible. And I think the only reasonable way we can fund that, honestly, is if Measure O passes in November, then I think we have the ability to put those $300,000 worth of city money into the project. Now, if the project climbs much higher, then I think we're going to have to have another discussion. And this certainly doesn't close the door on two things, and that's looking for participants, like you talked about, the Conservancy, helping out, possibly other organizations, and keeping the pressure on the state. If in fact the temporary is doable, the state can't forget about the bridge and say, oh, it's okay. The permanent fix still has to be pursued. We have to keep the pressure on the state. But I think this would be a path forward that we could get support for in the community. And hopefully, if everything works out, structural engineers certify this, I think we're talking, what, in the timeframe of maybe six months?
That's McCallcheck. So what is the timeframe? From staff at Foree. So the permanent-type approach is a three-plus-year perspective, and if there were a quick fix, a temporary solution, if there is one, what is the timeframe for that?
We're looking at months instead of years. The reason why I hesitate is because we'd like to come back with you with an analysis of the solutions. There may be some concepts or solutions that don't require a certain permit, so we can take that out of the timeline. But worst-case scenario, we believe that we could have a project in a matter of six months or so.
Have a project or have a completed project?
We're, completed project. We're looking at having a completed project.
And then, to Speaker's comments, Julie's comments on soil testing, those I take quite seriously. And I know we will do proper environmental studies, but with the bridge sitting there as it is and people going, so there's a lot of bad things happening, let me just say that. So one thing is, I saw a post online of somebody saying, oh, look at me, I'm riding my bike over this bridge. Do not go on the bridge. You will be in a mangled mess, and it will be bad. It's blocked and closed with barricades, and it's very clear, do not enter, do not go on the bridge. It will not go. Just my message to the community. But some people are going around it, some people are going under it, and so I would like, my opinion is, I would like to see, make sure that it's not a toxic situation under the bridge. I think that would be worthwhile pursuing as part of this process. Furthermore, I would like to see the, we heard some interesting ideas tonight, so I'm going to support staff to spend some of the resources we allocated to come back to us with options for a quick solution that I would really only support if it was done in parallel with a long-term fix with the state. I don't want to do a two-year solution and then have the state blow it off for five years, and then we're in this situation again. That's a situation I don't want to be in. But the conundrum is this. So it's not our bridge, and it's our resources, it's our community's money. And so I don't take that very lightly. But at the end of the day, this serves our community. And so I think it's worthwhile for us to spend the resources to solve this problem for our community, even though it's going to be, this may end up being a temporary fix. It's what our community needs. It's for safety, it's for going to work, going to school, for our tourists. So I'm going to support that. But in developing those options, I would specifically ask that the options presented from the public tonight be considered by the engineers, should the council so direct, and have those individual ideas reviewed and taken into consideration, because there's some good ideas that are worth looking at. And lastly, I think Councilmember Alafano made a fine point that if, in fact, we identify a solution that would take several hundred thousand dollars, I would support using Measure O funds, should it pass, to breathe new life into this crossing for our community. That's my position.
Thank you. Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you for everyone for your creativity and suggestions upon this. This is very difficult, again, as been mentioned, because we don't own the bridge, and we have certain controls of it and certain things we don't. So I have a couple of questions. One to our attorney, are we still in the process of working on an agreement with the state?
We've discussed in broad terms the outline of an agreement that would basically provide the city with a mechanism for taking the lead on a project. And so, yes, that is being worked on. Really, the direction that we get from the council with respect to focusing our energy on a permanent versus a, possibly a temporary fix, will have a big impact on what that agreement finally looks like. So I've spoken at some length with a legal counsel for the State Parks Department, and we've discussed an outline of the terms that we need to resolve, but there are some substantive issues that we need to deal with before we can really get to the fine points of the agreement.
And I'm thinking a lot of that's liability. If we do a temporary one, they probably want us to assume liability. They do not want it.
The issue of who would assume responsibility or potential liability for a temporary solution, should the city take the lead on permitting and building it, I think, is one that we're going to have to grapple with. Yes, that's exactly right.
Thank you. I think on the other parts here, and Mr. Hernandez, thanks for looking around for bridges again, too. If there's any piece of this we could use, whether it's for this bridge or other bridges or projects coming up, I think that's work looking into, even if it's for some of our trails. And I'd be curious to see why Foster City's getting rid of that. Maybe they've got an alternate route. Just want to make sure that that's not a bridge that's one that one should use anymore. There's issues. Also, for the temporary fix, so I know we were trying to initially shooting for something by October 15th, because that's kind of the time we cannot, we can stop getting into that creek to fix anything. So if we're talking about a temporary one, because long-term is going to be long-term, as much as we'd all like to think permits can be done faster, and everybody talks to people on the phone, and I have to say, I know people are talking to people on the phone from different agencies. If you do, get them to put that in writing, because we experienced some of the same things with the Main Street Bridge, and somebody somewhere wasn't telling the truth, or people will tell you things off the cuff. If they're telling you stuff and they represent an agency, get them to send it to you in writing, because that's very important. Because we could all say, we talked to this guy, and this guy said this, and he might be saying one thing to you, but what's the reality? So I appreciate the people who have reached out to the many agencies, but get what they say in writing. So again, how long from now, if we put in $300,000 by the end of the year, while we're still working through this, six months would be for a temporary, and we're looking at a couple of years for a long-term, just because of the funding, and that's another fight to go through, and whether that's the community and everyone else.
If I may, I'd like to just add on to that. I think the main thing is, we have to start the process. And then, in government, there's nothing definite dates out there. We all be honest with each other, but it sounds good, feels good, but get us that plan, get us that process. Let's pray November, December, January, February, we have some monster storms. I'm sorry. We need to have some snowpack and rain, but, so we don't know if we could pull this off, but at least we're going to start it. And we've already started by a month ago, saying we're going to fund, and now we're even putting more funds up to make sure that we're moving forward. So that's kind of my feeling. And I'm sure staff you understand, daily we talk about this.
So Councilwoman, I want to answer your question, and our new city manager has a saying that she wants us to manage expectations. And so I think initially, we were looking at an emergency CDP and moving in that direction, you know, and I'm not sure if that's the direction that we're looking at anymore. We are looking to permit this and have a regular CDP for the temporary solution if council chooses one of those options. And we're looking to do that and have that constructed by spring.
But that's our best guesstimate today.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. One other thing I need to add is, I don't want to throw out the $300,000 as an absolute. That was a, at least $300,000, and that did not include cost for permitting.
That was going to be my statement, Don. I think the $300,000 is a low figure. I think with the other costs that we're looking at permitting and all the other things, I think we're looking close to four, maybe five. So I think, you know, with, my concern is the report that Julie gave, you know, and if people are not abiding by not going on the bridge, we need to take it down seriously. If that actually does have the contamination that she's talking about, we need to take the bridge out. We absolutely need to take it out before we get more contamination into the soils and people get ill. So that's my number-one concern. My number-two concern is that we start the process, and then we can determine if indeed it's going to be six months, eight months, or 300 or 500,000 dollars. And I agree that, you know, but I think this council really needs to be careful, since I'm not going to be sitting up here, that when you're talking about allocating funds from O, that you really need to be explicit to the community that you're not, you can't move forward if O doesn't pass. So I don't want the community to think that this is going to go if O doesn't pass, because we don't have the money. So I think there's a lot of things that you really need to consider, and I think we've really got to step on, literally, the State Beaches and Park, if we're going to go with this temporary, they have, while we're doing this, another two years to get that funding. And if they can't get the funding, there's no excuse for that. So that's one of the pluses of doing the temporary. It does give them a little bit more time to get the actual 1.8 or 2.8, whatever amount of money they need. of money they need, because the temporary bridge will be there, but the pressure has to be kept on them. So I just want you guys to consider those things, that we really need to make it clear that if O doesn't pass, nothing's getting fixed. So, and I really urge the council to really do something about that bridge if it really truly is that toxic.
Thank you. So Alex, and we'll try to wrap this up here.
Just one quick follow-up to Councilmember Patridge. On the permitting item, we would try to leverage our community resources, people who have come forward to this council at the previous meetings, saying that they would help in kind. So we have that on our radar as well, with any temporary or permanent solution for this bridge, to try to reduce your costs.
Thank you. Yeah, I forgot about that. Also, we still have Sweetwood. So Sweetwood, if that bridge is really good, could be used, the Foster City Bridge could be used for that. So I think that's something we could tell State Beaches and Parks.
Yeah, I think our first mission is to open this one. And then Sweetwood, hopefully the state will get to him by then, but who knows? So I hope this gives you all a better feel, what we're trying to do, but you all are putting up the money. And show me the money, we are showing you the money at this time. So city manager, what is your comment?
So I just want to, I think this is what I've heard, and just want to make sure I've got this. It sounds like you'd like for us to go ahead and get, engage an structural engineer who can help us with some potential options, provide some timelines, costing, and regulatory requirements for each of the options, and to also make sure that they have considered the suggestions that were raised, that have been raised by the community members. I want to make sure I understood in terms of the, also the $50,000 that staff is recommending out of the 100,000 that could potentially go for a match to try to get some funding from the coastal concern, I can't say that word, concerns that.
You can say it in Spanish.
I can't say it in either language. So I just want to make sure that that was the other portion of it. And then, once we have the, a better, a finer point, as Dante has described it, we would bring that back to the council, try to better understand what the dollars are, and look to Measure O to help fund the temporary fix, presuming it's something that's within a boundary that the council is comfortable with.
Thank you. And I would like to include also Walter's group as an advisory committee to stay in communications with that group of individuals, so you guys understand, and you could pass the word out there if that works for you.
Good, happy to do that.
Okay. Rick, and then we'd like to bring this closer.
I'd like to, to be a consideration for, when the structural engineers come in, evaluate the options and options of the community, to look at the current bridge, and I agree with Councilmember Patridge, with people, two things. One, if it's, if there's a toxicity issue, that's a huge problem. Second issue, there's a structural issue, and people are still going on it. They're climbing the fence, they're finding a way around the barricades, and it's dangerous. So for structural reasons and for toxicity reasons, and it's not our bridge, so we can send an invoice to State Parks, but I don't want to see anybody get hurt. And I would also like to look into soil testing.
Good. And I think we've given staff, all of you have helped give us directions, and so we are going to take it to the best of our ability and keep you informed. And I think we've come a long way. We're doing our very best. I don't know what more we could do other than cry, but we're not going to cry. Final comment. Go on to my clock, Jack.
My final comment is echoing Naomi's comment about Measure O. We're going to bring this to, we're going to bring this to a fork in the road. We're going to come to a point, we're going to have options soon, and then we're going to have to decide how we pay for that. And let's get to that fork in the road and decide, but Measure O is going to be the one to get done, because otherwise we don't have the resources. Thank you.
And I might need Julie, I'm getting ex spasms up here, so don't go home yet. Anyway, thank all of you. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Item 11, I believe. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We've distributed to you and also to the public an addendum to the staff report. The bids were opened after the time had passed for us to submit the report. So you have the analysis with the three bids. A few months ago, we came to you to ask for authority to go out to bid for the 2014 Cape Seal street repairs. And tonight, what we want you to consider is awarding the contract to the lowest bidder. Just as a bit of background, we had rehabilitated 17 miles, and we had about six and a half miles that needed some additional repair, and the treatments were slurry seal, resurfacing, or reconstruction. And so the city was able to fund the street repair a lot quicker than it would have initially, in part due to the funds available through Measure J. And so we were able to schedule all of these street resurfacing for this fiscal year, and I'll talk a little bit about reconstruction at the end of this report. So the bids were open on September 11th. The consideration of the award is tonight. And we wanted to make sure we took note of that the final phase that we're going to be entering into is kind of the phase that is reserved for the streets that need the most help, that we're going to have to spend the most money and do the most repair on. And I'll talk a little bit about that tonight. Those streets are not up for consideration tonight. So these were the different treatments we talked about, when we talked about small, medium, large, extra-large. The one that we're talking about tonight, the treatments, again, are the slurry seal and asphalt rubber cape seal, that we're looking at, the medium-range projects. In your report, it includes the streets that we've identified, and they're identified in your staff report. They've been available to the public. We will make it available to the public again. But these essentially are the streets we're talking about with this, with this contract. The contract award does not include widening, curbs, sidewalks, or lights. It is simply repairing the street in its current state, but repairing it. And the three bids that we received, the lowest was VSS International, and their bid was for 973,000. And we've done some research, and they are a very reputable company. They're out of West Sacramento. Other cities have been very pleased with the work that they've done. If the contract award is approved tonight, staff will work on information and outreach to the community. We understand that last time, we did a large-scale kind of street improvement project, there was a little bit of confusion. We're going to pay special attention to meeting with the community, doing press releases, kind of getting the information out soon before the work is going to begin in an affected area. So we're going to take our time between September and December to kind of do that. We also want to maintain one lane of vehicular traffic open and parking on one side during most times of the construction. And full street parking and vehicular use will be restored after working hours where possible. So with this contract, we're looking to start mid-October, if it's approved tonight, and then construction will end, we anticipate, the late December. I want to talk just a little bit about the next phase that I mentioned, and that's the, we're calling the 2015 Hot Mix AC Overlay or Reconstruction Project. And these are some of the streets that we're actually currently in design right now. They are going to take a little bit of planning, they're going to take a little bit of work, and they're going to be the most expensive. But we are, we have the funds to do it, and we're initiating. We've actually had a couple of meetings. We've been requested by neighbors on Washington to come out and talk about the improvements in the design phase. And our city engineer, Mo Sharma, and myself went to Washington, and we had a room full of about 25 people who had complained for years about kind of the condition of the streets. We were able to kind of talk to them about a schedule, what was going to happen, and we were able to kind of vet some of our plans in the design phase, to make sure we included them in the design phase. We have another scheduled meeting with residents of Ventura. So we've been doing that at the request of residents. We anticipate coming to you to look for awarding a contract in early 2015 for this work. So design is underway right now, and we're looking to come back at the end of this year to talk about awarding a contract. There are other streets that the public is really concerned about. These are streets that are in our circulation system, but we need to evaluate further before we can make a recommendation to city council. Some of the street segments that we're talking about were never accepted by the city, so they were not improved to city standards. So restoring these streets presents a host of issues, practical issues, legal considerations. There are a number of things that need to be considered before we can make a recommendation for some of these streets. So we would like to continue to work with the community, work with legal to address these street segments on a case-by-case basis, and then bring it back to city council for consideration, possibly during a budget time when we look at our capital projects. So for tonight, we're requesting authority to execute a contract with VSS International for the 2014 Cape Seal project in the amount of 973,000 dollars, plus 15 cent contingency for unanticipated change orders. That completes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Alafano?
Dante, on the Cape Seal project, I know it's on Magnolia, my son lives in that street, and there's some really big potholes, have been people missing in some of the potholes. Can this really fill that in to that level?
And I'm going to let our city engineer give us, answer that question.
We don't want to re-engineer the streets, though, this evening. In both slurry seal and cape seal projects, the first task is to repair those kind of potholes and all the failing areas of the street. So the engineer's estimate was that we don't need to reconstruct the whole street, there are only certain segments which could be repaired, and then cape seal would be the cost-effective way to repair that. Thank you. And I might just comment, too. Over the years, people have commented, oh, when I bought my house years ago, I paid for improvements. But I can tell you, there was a developer that took that money and left town. He never put it, we don't have that money in reserve anywhere. And I won't mention names, but he built a lot of houses in El Granada and Miramar. And so we don't have that fund out there, and I have documents of that somewhere. So are we happy? Yes?
So, sorry, I beat you to it. I just want to...
Getting late, come on.
I just want to verify that our allocated budget for this, that this cost is fully within our budget allocation.
Yes, it is.
Naomi, would you like to say something?
I just want to thank Dante, because I went in there and I said, where is Ventura? Where's Washington? We promised these people. And then he told me that, you know, it was going to go 2015, but he, they were meeting with the, with the people. So I'm really happy that, that you guys have taken that initiative to meet with them, because I know it's going to be a lot more work to get those streets, because it's going to, I mean, they start doing the work on 2015, but you've got that whole pre-step that needs to be done. So thank you for that, and I appreciate that.
Vice Mayor?
If there's no more comments, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to award and execute a contract for the 2014 Street Cape Seal project to the lowest responsible bidder, VSS International, Inc.
I'll second.
They moved in second. Any further discussion? I can tell you that this is probably one of the bigger paving jobs we've done over the years, and we just thank the community for their patience and support and funding, all help. So roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alafano?
Yes.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Yes.
Councilmember Patridge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fraser?
Yes.
Mayor Mueller?
Yes, so ordered, moving on to item 12, the establishment of a Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee. So staff?
Yes, and if we can get the PowerPoint going on that item. This is an item, Mayor and members of city council, that was initiated by the city council for consideration. And so, just as a quick update, just to let you know the milestones we've been through, we had the June 17th, where the council approved the authorization to test the integrity of the bridge. We are currently expecting proposals due from qualified testing firms on October 8th, and we'll return to city council to provide an update and talk about the process moving forward. Public interest on the bridge has been, has been a concern in the past, and there has been indicated a need for improved ability to provide the better information to the community and include their feedback to inform decisions that are made about the Main Street Bridge. So the purpose of the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee would be to serve in an advisory capacity to the city council, to help evaluate project alternatives and design options, comment on the adequacy of the environmental review document, and advise staff and the council on ways to improve public education and outreach around the project. The way that it can be comprised, and I would ask you to refer actually to the attachment in your staff report that has all of the categories and the numbers, but we're, we are recommending that it be comprised of 10 members that represent a cross-section of the city. We're looking at three members that, who own property or operate businesses within a downtown specific plan area, and we have a map that indicates that area. Two at-large community members, one member with an interest and knowledge in historic preservation, one member representing the Chamber of Commerce, one with a knowledge and interest in environmental protection, one with knowledge of architecture, civil engineering or construction, and a member of the planning commission. And the next slide is just the boundaries of the specific plan to ensure that, you know, it is inclusive of people that could potentially be impacted. Many of the qualifications are the same as other commissions and committees for the city, so that would not be different. The only thing that would be different is we would like to ask any potential applicants to submit a statement outlining their qualifications to serve on the committee. And similar to the G-PAC process, we would recommend a subcommittee of the council to review the applications, interview people, and then make recommendations to the entire city council. Additional recommendations, we recommend that the committee sunset after the completion of the bridge project, and we recommend that all of the meetings be public, and any information shared or back and forth would just be public information. So we recommend that the council establish a Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee for the bridge project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have a couple cards. I do know that Councilman Alafano has pushed this, and Councilman Kowalczek also encouraged us to consider to look at this, so would you like... So would you like to hear the cards first?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Roback, please, and then followed by Mr. Steinberg. I have two cards.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I commend the council for forming this committee. On the surface, it sounds like a really good idea. I am concerned that a true representative sampling of the community is not going to be done, and that's based on the track record that the council has already had. For example, the General Plan Advisory Committee, which I did try to get on, is composed primarily of developers, real estate people, and other non-environmentalists. And I think that's wrong, and I think that this committee ought to be a true representative community committee that's made up of citizens who care about the community and are involved with the environment. So please don't continue your track record of poor decisions about general plan advisory committee-type appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Steinberg? You can have the after. Jerry Steinberg, 591 Terrace Avenue, Halfpoint Bay. This is really in response to not the setting up of the committee, but what seems to be coming every time anything mentioned is about the Halfpoint Bay Bridge. And I've talked to Dante about this, and what I've been disappointed with is that there's a continued unbalanced, as in tonight's staff report, if you look at the first page, circulated by our contracted city engineer and his firm. I would like to quote directly from a Caltrans in-house publication available to the public on their use of the terms in their engineering reports of bridge inspection, and there's copies I left on the table. These are comments from the chief inspector of whom I've spoken with. "Functionally obsolete." I quote, "Many of California's older bridges are in good shape but functionally obsolete, a term broadcasters love to repeat to scary-sounding teaser headlines. But the term tells us more about the age of a bridge than its structural integrity. Functionally obsolete simply means that the bridge was built using different standards..." Yeah, Speaker, I'd like to remind you, we're speaking on the agenda item. We don't need the history of the bridge. If you would like to comment on the agenda item... This is the agenda item, because what the problem is, is the same thing that Marcia brought up, the idea that people say things, and then you want to see them in writing. And what I'm saying is that... Okay, I'd like you to content us down to the agenda item about your feeling on the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee, please. Well, I think that the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee has to consider what the terminology of functionally obsolete and what structurally deficient mean. And I think that the comments from the chief bridge inspector for Caltrans should be addressed. He will not be on our committee, I can guarantee you that. But our committee will be reviewing all the comments. But he's the one that started this whole thing. He's the one that, the report was generated then by Mo. And what I'm really ending up with is, it would be great if the contracted city engineer, firm, and any sub-firms they favor with work would give a more balanced approach to avoid any attempt of achieving more financial gain. Thank you. Thank you. I can assure you that the committee, when it's in place, will have the authority to recommend to us the best recommendations as possible and the best balance for that. Thank you. That concludes the comments here. Counsel?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, two things. In looking this over, I think in terms of streamlining this a little bit, I think we can actually, instead of 10, I think we can actually do this with nine, which is still a large group of people. So I would suggest we take the at-large from two down to one and make it a nine-member committee. I think that would be good. The second recommendation is I'd say if we agree that we open this up for applications on September 22nd, which is, what, Monday, and then we close them on, say, October 13th, and then we could bring our recommendations, Rick and I could, back to council by the October 21st meeting for the council to approve it. Similar to what we did with the GPAC committee, which I personally feel...
That's too fast.
Okay, you want four weeks?
You need to give the public more time to get them board out. Yeah. You need to give the public some chance to...
Then let's go from the 22nd to the 17th, four weeks.
Alex is just reminding me that, just as a point of reference, GPAC was open for two and a half months.
Okay. So you want to do a month?
Minimum.
You want to do six weeks? Okay, let's do six weeks. And I think it's important, just like Naomi and I did on the GPAC committee, we talked with everybody, we got a really great group together, and I personally am very happy with the representation we have in the GPAC committee. A lot of work went into it. So I think it's incumbent upon Rick and myself to do the same thing with this committee, to get a good, really representative sample of people that will be able to help us resolve this issue.
Councilman Kowalczek?
Through the mayor, based on our track record, I would really look forward to having a similar committee that represents the best of our community. And one exception, council member, is I don't concur on reducing it to nine. I prefer to keep it at 10. I think two at-large community members will give us more representation. And as you know, with scheduling meetings, at any one time, we might get one of them there. That's my recommendation. Other than that, I would agree with everything.
Any other comments from council? I think the main thing is we are moving forward with this process, again, that we are going to be accepting applications, and the rules are printed out here, very plain, and what has to be done. So if we don't have any further discussion, will we make a motion, please?
I would move that we establish a Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee to assist during the pre-development and construction phase of the bridge project, and that we allow applications for a six-week period, and that Councilmember Kowalczek and I will bring back to the full council recommendations for the final committee.
I'll second.
Moved in second. And all in favor?
Aye.
So ordered, 5-0. Make a brief presentation. I know you're tired, too, Alex. You got it out in print pretty well for us all.
I'm sorry, Mayor. There's just a typo in the last recommendation, three members who own property or operate businesses, just to be, that clarification.
Good catch. All right, Alex, it's your call.
Get to be the closer yet again. So good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alex Kujin, deputy city manager. Before you tonight is a strategic plan and matrix planning update. You heard the matrix planning update a little bit earlier on the presentation, so we got that covered, so it'll be a lot shorter. So we're going over the strategic plan. So just as a little bit of background, the strategic plan sets the priorities over the next three to five years for the city. The strategic plan was started back in late 2012, where the council held community meetings, and then it was adopted on March 18th, 2013. Since that date, we've been coming back every six months for an update of council to go over your strategic priorities and let you know where we are at. The strategic plan project for fiscal year 1415, all of the projects are on track and do not require any council action at this time. So before you, on the PowerPoint, is kind of a list of our high, medium, and low priorities of the strategic plan that you guys set out back in March 2013, and the years that we, city staff, is working on the items that you have. So some of the key highlights. So the first key highlight is the library. Just to give a little background, so on February 12th, 2014 of this year, the city council held a special meeting, and you guys gave direction to go ahead and update the conceptual designs of the library from the 2003 library plan that you guys had. With that, it all culminated with a July 15th study session where council decided on a preferred funding option and just went over the details of the building program and the scope of the project. We came back on August 19th, last city council meeting, and you guys went ahead and decided on a building size, and that was a 25,000-square-foot library. Staff is right now consulting and getting estimates for traffic study and parking studies for the project, and we are also starting to work on a robust fundraising campaign. General plan. So council earlier adopted six guiding principles. One of the main items that will be getting underway is an update of our land use maps, and there'll be a public discussion and public dialogue about those updates. You also have the general plan meeting that's coming up later on this month that will be in Spanish as well. Regarding organizational analysis, we hired five positions. That includes a city manager, a community development director, a deputy city clerk, a management analyst, and an administrative assistant. These are all in-house city employees, so we've done a lot. We've also established a community development department over the last year, and the city manager will be conducting an organizational review and an assessment for our overall city operations. So that'll be coming forward to you guys at a later date. The Main Street Bridge, you kind of heard that before, just the item before us, you guys established a committee for the Main Street Bridge. Also, there's RFQ, RFPs going on for the testing of the bridge currently, and so we're moving ahead on that. I'm trying to be as quick as possible for you guys. These are all, you know, it takes a lot of time and a lot of work, but I'm speeding right through it, but they're, you know, it's a lot of stuff. Emergency preparedness, we've had numerous trainings for city staff and for local, our other neighbor agencies that have attended, and these include ICS 100, 700, Web EOC. The emergency operation plan was brought in front of the council earlier this summer for you guys' feedback, and that's also going out to keep and other agencies right now for review. Wow. The debt reduction plan, that's another thing that we're ongoing. All actions are completed on that, and staff is monitoring and executing pay downs per our schedule, and those are set to be done in 2019, and the city will be debt-free with those judgment obligation bonds at that time. Promote tourism plan, what we've been working with the chamber on trying to get midweek business. We also have a bi-coastal campaign that the chamber's getting underway, and then we have a farm-to-table event on, I believe, September 28th. On MacDutra Park, the city hired Kakucho Kankel and Design Group to go ahead and work on the design and project management for MacDutra. The beautification committee has put forward $100,000. The city's putting forward $300,000. We've done a business roundtable meeting in June. We did a community meeting in July. It went to the Planning Commission in late August. That got approved, and so that'll be coming back to you guys shortly, the next couple months, once we kind of work a couple more details out. Smithfield, we completed a drainage study earlier this year. We also followed up with a biological study that's concluding shortly, and that'll be out for public view. And then we will be moving with a request for proposal for a park master plan, and we'll hope to get that established and drafted later on this year with hopes of starting that master planning and public participation and public input phase in spring 2015. One other item is the building that you're in currently right now. We no longer leak like a sieve. Our dry rot is repaired. We have, we have a stable home for the Boys and Girls Club and our recreation programs. So that's complete, and that can actually fall off our strategic plan list, because we did our repairs. One other item is, if you haven't already, you can take a look right across the way of what the future teen center home for this community, that will be open to all teens in this community. The Boys and Girls Club has been working on that, and it should be open in October of this year. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The baby, the baby has to be fed. He's got to get home. But I think, you know, thank you for that, Alex, and staff, but these are nine big items, boy, let me tell you. Come on. You know, everyone's worked really hard to do, and you tell me we're not doing anything. Look at those nine things and look at what's going on in this building. So thank all of you and all the council members for their hard work and dedication of participating in all these committee meetings. So I think we've accepted the report, and thank you, staff. And Magda, you've got nine more to get to next year for us, I guess. So they did set the bar high. So any other comments? Otherwise, I would like to adjourn the meeting this evening in memory of the assistant football coach, Rocky Perry, who gives so much of his time to our youth up at the high school. So we will have a moment of silence and adjourn in memory of Rocky's family. So ordered. Thank you.